Hearing Officer for the Office of Health Strategy. We're going to get started in about two minutes. I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that we are going to go on the record in about two minutes. Can I ask that everybody mutes themselves? Thank you. Good morning, I'm just going to address briefly the hearing reporter.
Are you talking?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you're all set.
I am.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and go on the record now. All right, good morning, everyone. This public hearing before the Health Systems Planning Unit identified by docket number 20-32390-CON is being held on April 22nd, 2021 regarding the Norwalk Hospital Association Certificate of Need application to establish elective percutaneous coronary intervention services, or PCI at Norwalk Hospital. On March 14, 2020, Governor Ned Lamont issued Executive Order 7B, which in relevant part suspended in-person open meeting requirements to ensure the continuity of operations while maintaining the necessary social distance to avoid the spread of COVID-19. The Office of Health Strategy is holding this hearing remotely. We ask that all members of the public mute the device that they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. This public hearing is being held pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 19A-639A and will be conducted in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 54 of the Connecticut General Statutes. My name again is Michaela Mitchell. Victoria Veltrey, the executive director of the Office of Health Strategy, has designated me to preside as the hearing officer over these proceedings today. Thank you. In addition to myself, my colleagues Brian Carney and Jessica Rival are here to assist me in gathering facts related to this application. Also on the line is our Consumer Information Representative, Leslie Greer, who will assist in gathering names for public testimony, sorry, public comment, rather. The certificate of need process is a regulatory process and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to follow the parties and members of the public and our staff. I'm going to make one announcement about muting yourselves. Please make sure that you're muted. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, we're going to request that decorum be maintained by all present during these proceedings. The hearing is being recorded and will be transcribed by BCT Reporting LLC. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to the Office of Health Strategy will be available for review through our CON portal, which is accessible on the Office of Health Strategy CON webpage. In making its decision, the Health Systems Planning Unit, or HSP, will consider and make written findings concerning the principles and guidelines set forth in Section 19A-639 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The Norwalk Hospital Association is a party in this proceeding and Stanford Health Incorporated has been designated as an intervenor with full rights in this proceeding. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Carney to read into the record those documents already appearing in HSP's table of record in the case.
Good morning, Brian. The Office of Health Strategy, Health System Planning Unit. At this time, I'd like to enter to the table of record Exhibit T through S.
All right, I just want to make a quick note that we did receive a few additional submissions, which were Exhibit T. It was Attorney Monahan's appearance. And then also, we added Exhibit U a few moments ago, and that was the public comment. Going to ask attorneys for the applicant if there's any objection to the inclusion of these exhibits into the record.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Mitchell. This is Ted Tucci, and on behalf of the applicant, we have no objection to the supplemental exhibits.
Okay, I'm going to turn to the intervenors' counsel for any objections.
Interveners' counsel has no objection to the supplemental exhibits.
All right, thank you, Attorney Monahan. All right, thank you, Brian, I appreciate that. So we are going to proceed in the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. As always, the Office of Health Strategy reserves the right to allow public officials and members of the public to testify outside of the order of the agenda as needed. I'm going to advise the applicants that we may ask questions related to your application that you might feel that you've already addressed. And we do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge about your proposal and also for the purpose of clarification if we have questions about something that we read. I want to reassure you that we have read your application completeness responses and your prefiled testimony. As this hearing is being virtually, we're going to ask that all participants, to the extent possible, enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting during the proceedings. Anyone who is not testifying or commenting will mute their electronic devices, including any telephones, televisions, and other devices not being used to access the hearing. We're going to monitor participants during the hearing. To the extent possible, we just ask that counsel for the parties, counsel for the applicant, and counsel for the intervenor raise hands to make an objection. I'll address you. If I don't, it's okay to unmute yourself and address me directly. All participants, again, make sure that you mute your devices and disable your cameras. When we go off record or take a break, we are not going to stop the recording. The fear of stopping the recording creates, you know, concern that we may not turn it back on properly when people are testifying. So we're going to record everything, so just make sure that you mute your device or disable your camera when we go on break or off the record. As I did before we started the hearing, I'm going to provide a warning to everyone that we're going to go back on the record so that everybody can get back in their places and turn their cameras on as appropriate. Public comment is going to go again in the order established by OHS. I'll call each individual by name when it's his or her turn to speak. At this time, I'm going to ask all of the individuals who are going to testify on behalf of the applicant and the intervenor to raise their right hand so that I can swear you in. All right, so do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God, everybody can unmute. Thank you. When giving your, thank you, thank you.
Attorney Michaela?
Yes.
I don't know if I'm far, am I too far away for you to see my hand if it is raised, given what you said? Okay, and I did have, I didn't want to interrupt your instructions and pre-hearing statements, but I did have a question about administrative notice of a couple of docket numbers, if I may raise that.
Okay.
Before the hearing testimony begins.
Absolutely, go ahead.
The intervenor respectfully requests that the docket numbers of CON, which were two Norwalk Hospital decisions, the final decision of that docket number, be admitted to the record through administrative notice, as it is a public document on a precisely same issue involving the same applicant. Similarly, the second one is the Norwalk Hospital application for the same reasons, both of which have been referenced or alluded to, even though without the docket number, as in testimony of the applicants and in the submissions in the before the prefiled testimony. And then finally, because the objection to our request of as a petitioner was grounded in part on a very specific reference to our reiterating arguments in a prior proceeding just last year and not too long ago, I believe it is appropriate that that reference be properly identified in the record as the Greenwich Yale Haven application, docket number 2032342-Con. And those are the three docket numbers that are on the public docket of this agency that I request administrative notice be taken.
Who was the attorney just last speaking? Sorry to interrupt, this is the reporter.
Okay, so that was Attorney Patrick Monahan?
Thank you, and I would just ask attorneys to identify themselves when speaking. Thank.
Thank you. All right, so Attorney Tucci, do you have any response to that request?
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell. This is Ted Tucci, one of the counsel for the applicant. And we have no objection to OHS taking administrative notice of prior dockets. I would just note for the record, we would want to make sure that with respect to the docket number concerning the Greenwich Hospital application, docket number 20-32342-Con, that the Stanford Hospital appeared as an intervenor in that proceeding. So we would just want to make sure that all of the materials, including late files and any other materials that were submitted by the intervenor in that process were part of the administrative notice of that record.
Any objection, Attorney Monahan?
Absolutely no objection.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and take administrative notice of those three dockets. Anything else, Attorney Monahan?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else, Attorney Tucci?
No, thank you, Hearing Officer.
Okay, so last thing that I'm going to mention is just a reminder to everyone. When giving your testimony, make sure that you state your full name and adopt any written testimony that you have submitted on the record prior to testifying. At this time, I'm going to allow the applicants to proceed with their testimony. Before you begin, one other thing is if you use any acronyms, make sure that you define what they are before you use them just for the benefit of the public and also clarity of the record. I'll turn it over to Attorney Tucci.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell, and good morning to you and good morning to members of the OHS staff. My name is Ted Tucci, and along with Lisa Boyle and Connor Duffy, we represent the applicant in the CLN proceeding that brings us here this morning on behalf of Norwalk Hospital Association. We're prepared now to present the direct testimony of the applicant's witnesses. We're going to begin with the testimony of Dr. John Murphy, and then we'll proceed through our witnesses in order.
Thank you, we're ready for you, Dr. Murphy.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Mitchell. My name is John Murphy. I'm the president and CEO of NuVance Health. It's nice to see you again. I'm also a practicing physician and neurologist, and I hereby adopt my prefiled testimony. There are a few points I'd like to make in the few minutes that I have. The first of which is elective PCI, or percutaneous coronary intervention at Norwalk Hospital, is an important part of our vision for healthcare delivery within NuVance Health. Our goal is and always has been to deliver high-quality care that is accessible, affordable, patient-centered, and delivered as close to home and family as possible. We currently offer a broad range of cardiovascular services within NuVance Health. It was actually the first institute that we created, as it represents the leading cause of death in America. Elective PCI at Norwalk Hospital, in our view, is a missing link in our service delivery to patients in this community and our ability to provide them with life-saving care and to keep their hearts healthy. The existing regulatory system prevents patients with cardiovascular disease to access this life-saving care at their local hospital, their hospital of choice. Yet there's no corresponding advantage in terms of cost or quality. And we do believe that that regulatory system needs to understand and modify its position as a result. We are firmly committed to play a role in controlling the escalating healthcare costs that confront the state and the nation for that matter. Fee-for-service medicine is giving way to value-based care, and we are willing to be held accountable for the quality and the cost of that care. We want to be part of this solution. We salute the state for its position really in leading health systems and hospitals towards the adoption of alternative payment models. And your office really has led the way. As part of our agreed settlement, as a matter of fact, we committed to increase the number of patients receiving care under alternative payment models and risk-based contracts of one kind or another. And we have been diligent in our pursuit of that settlement and those terms. We already provide primary PCI, as you know, at Norwalk Hospital. We have the team, the facilities, the equipment, and the experience. I think it's important to remember that in the decade that I was born, medical knowledge was said to double every 50 years or so. In the decade I was in medical school in the 80s, that changed, and medical knowledge doubled every seven years. In the decade in which we live today, it is said that medical knowledge doubles every 73 days. We believe that the regulatory framework needs to embrace that reality and evolve as such. Here at Norwalk Hospital, we are ready, willing, and able to perform elective PCI. I thank you sincerely for your consideration of this application, and I respectfully ask that your office approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. This is Ted Tucci, counsel for Norwalk Hospital. And the next witness who will be presenting direct testimony is Dr. Mark Orshavsky.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell and staff of the Office of Health Strategy for the opportunity to testify in support of Norwalk Hospital's application today. My name is Dr. Mark Orshavsky. I am the system chair of the NuVance Health Heart and Vascular Institute and a practicing interventional cardiologist. I adopt my prefiled testimony for the record. This morning, I'll tell you a little bit about NuVance Health's approach to providing cardiovascular care for our patients and to provide some background for the reasons that we would like this application approved. NuVance Health approaches cardiovascular care in a system-wide approach. We do this in a number of ways. We have a system-wide collaboration with multidisciplinary experts within our system that participate in clinical councils. We are participating in numerous national registries, which help us to compare ourselves to national standards. And Danbury Hospital has recently gone through a program assessment and affiliation with the Cleveland Clinic. Norwalk Hospital is currently undergoing an assessment of our cardiovascular program by the Cleveland Clinic Heart and Vascular Institute, and we anticipate a formal affiliation later this year. That affiliation focuses on quality and best practice. And we've already started to push out a lot of the care pathways and guidelines that we have developed with the Cleveland Clinic. The safety of performing PCI without cardiac surgical backup is not in question. That has been proven by multiple randomized studies that are easily viewed in the literature. And that's largely due to improved interventional techniques, such as coronary stents, coronary covered stents, new technologies and techniques, and new medications to make PCI much, much safer, percutaneous intervention, much, much safer than it was several years ago. The current estimates of the need for coronary artery bypass surgery in the setting of a PCI are about two patients in 1,000, all the way down to a few patients in 10,000. And I think it's important to restate that Norwalk Hospital is already performing PCI on STEMI patients. This is really the sickest cohort of patients. They present suddenly to the emergency room. They're in need of emergent care, and that life-saving care is provided by our physicians at Norwalk Hospital. I also think it's important to note that while we're calling this an elective PCI application, many of our patients who fall into that category are not truly elective. They're patients who have been admitted to the hospital who are in need of urgent procedures to prevent heart attacks or to minimize heart attacks. And that life-saving care really should be available as well at Norwalk Hospital. We have sufficient current volume to support this program. We are currently performing PCI on approximately, for the FY '21 year, projected to be about 80 patients with STEMI presenting to Norwalk Hospital. And if you look at programs around the state and nationally, programs that are doing PCI for patients presenting with STEMI, their ratio of elective PCI to STEMI patients is over four to one. And I think that using those 80 STEMI patients as a surrogate for what the volume could be and probably should be at Norwalk Hospital, we would be well over the 200 cases that the literature suggests that we should have if we are to perform PCI without surgical backup. I think it's also important to note that, you know, geographic distance doesn't necessarily equate to geographic isolation or is a sufficient measure for geographic isolation. We all know we have bad weather that comes up, we have storms, we have terrible traffic with accidents, the inability of family to be with their loved ones during a stressful experience, and even pandemics, unfortunately, really, I think, should make us question the wisdom of transferring patients to another hospital without necessity. I think also the use of valuable EMS resources to perform those transfers when they could be doing other necessary activities is something that we really should think about. There is a redundancy involved in terms of work being performed on the part of the receiving hospital, and that redundancy is not just extra work, but it also introduces the chance for medical errors and patient harm. I think certainly I have no doubt that if this application is approved, Norwalk Hospital will operate a high-quality elective PCI program that's going to serve the patients of Norwalk Hospital and the surrounding communities in a way that will allow for actually improved care for the patients of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Orshavsky.
Hearing Officer Mitchell, this is Ted Tucci, counsel for Norwalk Hospital. And next witness who will be speaking in support of the application is Dr. Arshad Yeta.
Good morning. And thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell and staff of the Office of Health Strategy for the opportunity to testify in support of the Norwalk Hospital application today. My name is Dr. Arshad Yeta, and I'm an interventional cardiologist, and I'm also the director of the Cardiac Catheterization Laboratory here at Norwalk Hospital. I hereby adopt my prefiled testimony for the record. In regards to our history, here at Norwalk Hospital, we have been offering primary angioplasty coverage for approximately 11 years, and we started our program back in July of 2009. Since then, we've offered 24/7 coverage in our cardiac catheterization laboratory for the sickest of patients that come in to the hospital who are on death's door. We have a very well-staffed and well-stocked cardiac catheterization laboratory here. We offer equipment that may not be available at even many other advanced institutions. We're able to perform percutaneous intervention. We have the latest in technology in terms of stents. We also perform coronary imaging to ensure that we provide high-quality care. We have a new cardiac catheterization laboratory, which we're building out and will be completed in May and be starting to be used at the end of May. In addition, we offer support devices like intra-aortic balloon pumps and Impella devices, which as well are very, are at the forefront of cardiology care today. In addition, we have, besides cardiologists who are on call 24/7, we also have thoracic surgeons and vascular surgeons who are also on call 24/7 to offer any support, which would, if at all would be necessary, can also help in the function of cardiac catheterization laboratory. At this time, I function as a cardiac catheterization director, and the one thing that we have is we have a core group of dedicated physicians. We have a core group of dedicated staff who've been here and who've really shown dedication to our STEMI program and to our diagnosis. to our STEMI program and to our diagnostic angiography program as well. We have a very robust education system. We, as in many advanced tertiary care centers, they offer education and teaching. We do the same. We offer CATH conferences monthly. We have STEMI meetings or sort of meetings in regards to all our cases. I review every single coronary intervention which is performed at the hospital and to make sure that we offer the highest quality of care for all of our patients. In addition to that, we train our staffs on a regular basis, weekly, to make sure that they understand anything that is going on in the forefront of cardiology to make sure we are well-suited to deliver any types of care that's needed to all of our patients. In terms of why I feel like, you know, at a hospital of our size, you know, we all know that there have been, as volume does increase, we've shown that there are also improved measures of outcome. And as Dr. Woschowski mentioned, we have a very, actually, intermediate volume of patients presenting with acute myocardial infarction. If you extrapolate that out, two patients would be presenting with non-est elevation myocardial infarction or elective PCI, I feel like our volume would be in the middle ground. One benefit that we have here is that we would have two cardiac catheterization laboratories available. And with that being said, we would be not a very high-volume center, but we'd fall in that middle-of-the-road center, intermediate volume. And I feel like that's kind of the ideal ground where we're able to provide high-quality care, personalized, personalized care to these patients, and offer a lower incidence of complications for these patients. In terms of why we also have to understand that acute coronary syndrome is not a binary diagnosis, a continuum of diagnosis, you have patients who present with, you know, stable angina, with unstable angina, myocardial infarctions, and acute ST elevation myocardial infarctions. But, you know, we understand that this is not a binary or there's not distinct cutoffs in between these diagnoses. So currently, we're only able to provide care for patients who present with the acutest elevation myocardial infarction. And I strongly believe that if we think in this manner, we actually cause harm to many patients who present with other diagnoses. For example, it's been adopted by many of guidelines, including the American College of Cardiology, the European Society of Cardiology, that early invasive strategy should be employed in patients who present with acute myocardial infarction, in particular if they have elevated risk, and they should undergo angiography within 12 to 24 hours. In addition, patients who present with high-risk acute myocardial infarctions who are not STEMI may even need to have angiography done within two hours. Unfortunately, these metrics are very hard to accomplish if we don't have the capacity to perform those procedures here at Norwalk Hospital. As you know, we're in a very congested area, and the ability for us to transfer patients in a timely manner is hindered by many obstacles, including traffic, weather, EMS services, and also the coordination it takes to actually transfer a patient can also be very time-consuming. In addition to the fact that transfers could take some time, they also pose many hindrances. There's an issue in terms of medical records. Medical records oftentimes between institutions are not shared, so oftentimes these records are printed, imaging is likely unavailable. In addition, there's change of providers. Not only are the cardiologists different, but in addition, the nursing staff is different, the hospitalists are different, the house staff may be different. And this really, what this does is it causes an area for errors in medical records, medical administration errors, and increased risk of infection. So we really feel like transfers should be avoided if possible. In addition, follow-up for these patients becomes disjointed. Now, all of a sudden, you've given them two cardiologists, two hospitalists, so they become a little bit confused as to how follow-up will also be employed. Lastly, the whole area of COVID-19 has really shown us that transfers can become difficult in addition because of multiple things. First of all, during COVID, we did realize, and we did see, according to many studies that have been published, that elective cases had to be held. Even semi-urgent cases were being delayed. In addition to that, the availability of cath labs and cath lab staff became limited. So even if a transfer is available, or a transfer was necessary, it may not be available to the patient. So in conclusion, I strongly believe that if elective PCI were to be able to be performed at Norwalk Hospital, I think it'd improve quality of care, decrease length of stay for patients, it would decrease the cost for these patients, but most importantly, it'll increase patient satisfaction, and we will do this without increasing the risk of cardiac events. And the other issue is, is that I feel like in the area we are, we'll be able to deliver care to patients who may not be able to achieve it otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yekda.
Hearing Officer Mitchell, this is Ted Tucci, Counsel for the applicant, and the final witness who will be presenting testimony on behalf of Norwalk Hospital Association is Dr. David Lomnitz.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell and staff of the Office of Health Strategy for the opportunity to testify in support of Norwalk Hospital's application today. My name is Dr. David Lomnitz. I am Chief of the Section of Cardiology at Norwalk Hospital and a practicing cardiologist. I adopt my prefiled testimony for the record. I'd like to use my time at this hearing today to highlight two important issues that are in my prefiled testimony. The first issue of great concern is the underutilization of the appropriate use of PCI. We know that this is a significant problem. We know it exists with throughout medicine, that things that have been proven to be beneficial aren't always done. Data from the New England Journal of Medicine shows that up to 30% of people who are clearly appropriate for PCI do not get PCI. We also know that the outcome for those patients is worse than those that receive PCI. In summary, for that is that patients do worse. They have higher mortality and higher morbidity. What is also known, and also very concerning, is that patients who are at highest risk for underutilization of appropriate use of PCI are racial minorities. This is an issue that plagues us in medicine, not just in cardiology, but in other areas as well, and is certainly highlighted by the COVID-19 crisis. So why does this happen? We don't really know for sure, but we do know when it comes to PCI, there's a clear association with the underutilization of PCI when appropriate with patients coming to hospitals that do not have the elective PCI capability and don't have full invasive cardiac services available. We know this to be true not only in the United States, which has been repeated in multiple studies, but is known internationally to be the case. Patients who don't go to hospitals with full capacities tend to be the ones at risk. So what does this mean? Can this be addressed? Interestingly, there was a study in New York City that was able to show the same finding, that these patients going to hospitals without these services available were not receiving the care at a much higher rate. If proximity to a hospital that has those capacities for invasive interventions were the solution, certainly in New York City with its high density of hospitals, that with and without, would certainly be the first, the most capable of tackling this issue, yet they aren't. The authors that that study, which is in my prefiled testimony and is published in the Annals of Internal Medicine, the authors suggest that the factors are much more complex. I think we have to be humble as physicians to recognize what we know and what we don't know. And these authors suggest that there may be factors, social, economic, language barriers, and other factors that play an important role. So what is the solution? What can we do to minimize this impact? I think that from the data, it's clear that if we can increase access to high-quality care, that patients will be less likely to be underserved and underutilized these appropriate procedures. I think Norwalk Hospital is in an ideal position to do it. I don't want to repeat Dr. Woschowski and Dr. Yekda's testimony. I think they did it very well, that the hospital and the network is highly committed to providing a high-quality program and to follow the highest standards. I think certainly the high rates of primary angioplasty speaks to a very high burden of disease in our area and certainly raises the question of underutilization in our community. I'm also very proud of Norwalk Hospital, a place that I've worked for the last 20 years, is extremely committed to the best care for all of its patients and its community and all patients who arrive here, but specifically very committed to providing care to underserved communities, particularly racial minorities and the uninsured. We have a very tight association and work closely with Americare's, which is a clinic that provides care for the uninsured, Norwalk Community Health Clinic that also provides care for uninsured. And in our estimates, which are in the OHS table, six projections that at least 20% of those receiving elective PCI will be patients who are either on Medicaid or uninsured. I think that the commitment of Norwalk Hospital will certainly help not only Norwalk Hospital and NuVance's commitment to try to improve care, reduce the issues of racial disparity, but I think it's a commitment that all physicians in the United States are acutely aware of in trying to make a positive impact. There's another issue that I want to highlight from my prefiled testimony. That is what, you know, we deem sort of the fractioning of care or dual pathways. I've been practicing at Norwalk Hospital for the last 20 years. I think Dr. Woschowski spoke very well with regard to the problems that occur acutely when you transfer a patient from one health system to another, and sort of the pitfalls that can occur. I want to talk about some of the things that can occur that aren't necessarily clearly obvious initially, but over time become clear are unintended consequences of these actions. What we see is that patients are not uncommonly, who live in our area, are seeking cardiac care in other health systems. This could be because when they arrived at Norwalk Hospital, they spent a brief amount of time here, then were transferred out. They ended up staying with physicians at those health systems. Now you've created a dual pathway where that patient is now having healthcare delivered in more than one setting where the communication, either by EHR or other methods, is not ideal by any standards. Oftentimes, those patients will arrive at Norwalk Hospital, and we, while we try our best and do our due diligence to try to get those records, this is often a challenge, even during work hours, but certainly on off-hours. I think those patients have higher rates of having tests repeated unnecessarily because of this issue. They're more likely to be admitted to the hospital because, for being conservative, want to ensure that nothing falls through the cracks, when if all that information were available, that might have been an unnecessary admission to the hospital. The other issue, I think, is that patients that do follow with us, and there are many, are confused, and I think this is understandable. If a patient came to Norwalk Hospital and all of a sudden was put in an ambulance and sent to another hospital for their cardiac care, they come to us, and they come to me in particular, and they'll say, "If I have a problem, where should I go? Should I go to Norwalk, or should I go somewhere else directly? Should I bypass that step?" This is very worrisome for us. We know that cardiac conditions can be something that can deteriorate within seconds to minutes. We want those patients to seek care locally. If not, important time could be wasted and bad outcomes can follow. Patients understandably may not follow that, and they're confused, and they may end up at hospitals, and the delay may cost them not only mortality but morbidity. In addition, we all know that not every chest pain patient will have a cardiac condition. They may end up at other hospitals, not without their primary care doctors, without the flow of information for conditions that may be non-cardiac, such as a gallbladder problem or pneumonia, et cetera. I think this displacement is exactly what we don't want to happen due to the inefficiencies, the lack of communication, and ultimately, poor care that's more costly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Lomnitz. Attorney Tucci, is that, does that conclude your presentation on behalf of the applicant? Or is there anything that you wanted to add?
Good morning, Hearing Officer Mitchell, Ted Tucci. That concludes the presentation of the direct testimony on behalf of Norwalk Hospital. I did want to alert you, Hearing Officer Mitchell, that at some point in the proceedings, we've been informed that State Representative Perone may be available for public comment. Our best information is that currently the State Representative is engaged in a legislative meeting, but if and when Representative Perone becomes available, we will just notify you of that fact, if that's acceptable.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to turn it over to you, Attorney Monahan.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell. The intervenor would like to present witnesses, and the first witness is Kathleen Seard, President and CEO of Stanford Health, Inc.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Mitchell, and members of the Health System Planning Unit and Office of Healthcare Strategy staff. My name is Kathleen Solar, and I'm the President and CEO here at Stanford Health, and I hereby adopt my prefiled testimony. As you know, Stanford Health is an independent, not-for-profit healthcare system, and I'm very proud of the 3,600 employees who devote their work to the commitment of patient-centered care and have enabled us to become a best-in-class provider of health services to our entire community regardless of their ability to pay. At Stanford Health, we really live our commitment to addressing healthcare disparities and providing community benefit through participation in and financial support for community-based initiatives and collaborations. In fact, even though we are only the fifth-largest healthcare organization in the state, we're the second-largest provider of uncompensated to the most vulnerable in our community. While I have a great deal of respect for my professional colleagues at Norwalk Hospital and NuVance Health, Stanford Health strongly opposes the system's application as it simply fails to meet the guidelines and principles that have been established by our General Assembly in our Certificate of Need law. Moreover, upon reading the prefiled testimony submitted by the applicant, I realized that I was effectively reading a request by NuVance Health System that this agency remove, as Dr. Murphy stated in his prefiled testimony, the regulatory barrier imposed by CON law. I feel compelled to remind everyone that Connecticut is a CON state until the General Assembly decides that it is not. And the legislative policy of demonstrating an unmet need is and has been a core principle of the CON law from its very inception. In addition to unmet need, the CON law seeks to avoid duplication of services and unnecessary increases in healthcare costs while at the same time supporting the promulgation of high-quality care. I respectfully urge that OHS see this application for what it plainly is, a request by the petitioner to have OHS aid in this expansion of a system as opposed to an application that must comport with controlling CON law in order to be granted. If this agency abides by the principles that If this agency abides by the principles that are set forth in statute, it should be clear that there is no demonstration of unmet need. There is no shortage of access to elective PCI programs in this geographic region and the region at issue. And there is no valid reason under CON law to grant permission for duplicative services, which will only aid in the dilution of quality and the increase in costs associated with elective PCI programs in our region. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Solar.
By means, Hearing Officer Mitchell, we do have a second witness prepared. And that is Dr. Rohit Bala. Okay, and Dr. Bala, if you adopt your prefiled testimony, then proceed. Thank you.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Mitchell and members of the Health System Planning Unit staff. My name is Rohit Bala. I'm Senior Vice President of Clinical Affairs and Quality at Stanford Health. I hereby adopt my prefiled testimony for the record. I am testifying today on behalf of Stanford Health in strong opposition to the application submitted by the Norwalk Hospital Association who seeks authorization to establish elective percutaneous coronary intervention of PCI services. My comments focus on the crucial role of evidence-based guidelines in improving the quality and safety of healthcare. Standard of using reviews of research and scientific evidence to identify which practices lead to optimal patient outcomes or reducing excess utilization dates to 1970, when the Institute of Medicine, now known as the National Academy of Medicine, was founded. Best practices are reviewed by experts from professional medical societies who incorporate these findings into clinical practice guidelines. We know from a litany of quality improvement efforts that adherence to clinical practice guidelines improves health outcomes, reduces patient harm, and reams in inappropriate healthcare utilization. The 2014 guidelines and annual volume standards on PCI pertinent to today's hearing represent the consensus of not one, not two, but three professional societies. The Society of Cardiovascular Angiography and Intervention, the American College of Cardiology, and the American Heart Association. Increasingly, policymakers, regulatory agencies, and payers are calling for tight adherence to guidelines to maintain compliance and to receive payment for services. The Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, or CMS, incorporates clinical practice guideline recommendations in its provider conditions of participation and coverage rules. For example, 42 CFR 42.8 CMS establishes evidence-based volume standards for organ transplantation services. It requires hospitals to perform an average annual minimum of 10 transplants as a condition of Medicare participation. In its national coverage decision on transcatheter aortic valve replacement, CMS established the requirement that existing TAVR or transcatheter aortic valve replacement programs maintain an average annual volume of 300 PCI cases and 20 TAVR procedures. The federal government also utilizes clinical practice guideline recommendations and evidence-based facility volume standards in its decisions on what services it will cover. For instance, the Affordable Care Act mandates coverage with no cost sharing for evidence-based preventive screenings, such as screening mammography and screening colonoscopy, as these have demonstrated a connection between early detection and better patient outcomes. Professional and certifying organizations, such as the American Board of Internal Medicine Foundation, have initiated the Choosing Wisely campaign. This program promotes adherence to best practices to reduce inappropriate utilization of procedures and tests with limited patient benefit. More than 80 specialty provider organizations, including the Society for Cardiovascular Angiography Interventions and the American College of Cardiology, actively
I'm just having a little difficulty hearing you. This is the stenographer. If you could speak up, please. I'm just hearing a little background noise. Apologies for the interruption.
That's okay. I think it's the papers. It might be on your, I don't know if you have a microphone, but I do hear the papers moving.
Okay. I'm not shuffling anything, but perhaps this others could view, I will, I'll repeat what I just said. And please let me know if you want me to to go to prior comments. Professional and certifying organizations, such as the American Board of Internal Medicine Foundation, have initiated the Choosing Wisely campaign. This program promotes adherence to best practices to reduce inappropriate utilization of procedures and tests with limited patient benefit. More than 80 specialty provider organizations, including the Society for Cardiovascular Angiography Interventions and the American College of Cardiology, actively participate in this campaign. I lay out the above discussion to illustrate the rich history and value of evidence-based medicine is properly accepted as the gold standard in healthcare as it improves patient care, reduces harm, and lowers healthcare costs by discouraging unnecessary utilization. Guidelines are derived from exhaustive research reviews, not only the latest study, and from the contribution of experts in their fields who devote countless hours and resources to the veteran patient care. Stanford Health supports the use of clinical practice guidelines and encourages OHS to continue to be guided by science and not by the business desires of health systems. Our patients deserve no less. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bala.
Hearing Officer Mitchell, I'd like to introduce Dr. Scott Martin, if we may proceed with our next witness.
Hi, Officer Mitchell. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Dr. Scott Martin. I'm an interventional cardiologist and Director of Interventional Cardiology here at Stanford Health. I accept my testimony into the record.
Yes, you adopt your
I adopt my written testimony. Dr. Bala spoke about the importance of clinical guidelines in all of medicine. And we're fortunate that in on this topic at hand, we have a number of guidelines to look at. The most pertinent being the 2014 multi-societal guidelines. There were a number of others, you know, 2013, 2016, 2017, that are, I think, all in the record that adopt the same volume standard. All the professional societies that are involved, including the Society of Interventional Cardiologists, which is the Society for Coronary Angiography Intervention, the American College of Cardiology, which represents all cardiologists, and the American Heart Association, which represents everyone involved in cardiac care, including physicians and public health experts and a wide range of others, came together to review all the pertinent information and evidence and decide what's safest and best practice in regards to providing elective PCI. The benefit of that is if we don't have to review every little study because a group of experts has done that. So I saw the applicants submissions of the studies looking at transfers across the outback in Australia or transfers of ICU patients in Iowa. I don't think that's really pertinent because we have our societal guidelines that look at all the pertinent data and come up with the recommendation. And their recommendations are highlighted and bold in my testimony here. Clinical competence guidelines state that in order to maintain proficiency while keeping complications at a low level, a minimal volume of greater than 200 PCIs per year achieved by all institutions. And they go on to say that new programs offering PCI without onsite surgery are inappropriate unless they clearly serve geographically isolated populations. In the application, the applicant originally estimated that their PCI volume would be between 128 and on 155 per year, depending on the year. And that clearly doesn't meet the guidelines. They have since formed a new estimate, you know, based on our objection, I think, and with a recent uptick in some primary PCI numbers. But I think it's hard to swallow, honestly. I'm sure they put significant time and effort into coming up with their application. And to expect that their volumes jumped 50%, you know, since that time is hard to understand from my standpoint. You know, they talked about how the number of elective PCI is often correlates with the number of primary PCI. And that's true to some extent, you know, because they're based on the same, some of the same factors. You know, population density and prevalence of disease. But they don't, there's no clear link and there's no study looking at that. You know, some centers, referral centers like Columbia University have dramatically more elective PCI than they do primary PCI because people choose to go there and their transfers and referrals there. Other places are predominantly driven by who is brought there via EMS. So it's not a clear correlation where we have 80 primary PCIs one year. You're going to necessarily have over 300 total PCIs. I think what's a better predictor in general is how many cardiac catheter you do. Because in in general, about 40% of your cardiac catheters will generate a PCI. It's not everybody needs a stem. You know, often we do these procedures and patients are best treated medically. Or we do the procedure and they require bypass surgery. Or we do the procedure and it's complicated and we have to stop and think it over and talk it over. So not every cardiac catheterization ends up with a PCI. If you look at the volume of non-primary PCI cardiac catheterizations, it's not a big number. It ranges from 83 to 105 over the past several years. And if you look at the transfers out, you know, where people get PCI in another center, it's not a big number. And so I think their original application estimates are reasonable. And those are all less than 200 PCIs per year. You know, I think the it's it's a stagnant market in terms of PCI. The population's aging, there are more diabetics, so it could now lead to more cardiac disease in the future, it's possible. But on the other hand, we have more and more evidence over the years that other than primary PCI, all of our elective PCIs are not necessarily life-saving procedures. They do treat symptoms, they do help people live better lives sometimes. But in contrast to the applicant's suggestion that PCI is underutilized, and those were studies from 1999, 2003, if you look at more recent studies, there's been a strong push that PCI is is overutilized. And the appropriate use criteria were invented not to drive people to get more PCI, but in fact, the opposite, that there was a strong intention that we were doing too many. I wish it was otherwise. This is my job. I would love to be more. But, you know, if you look at regional, statewide and national trends, it's at best stagnant. So I think it's very unlikely that they're going to get to 200 PCIs per year, which is what the guideline suggests is the best in terms of outcomes and safety. And if they did in a stagnant market, the only way to do that would be pulling from all the surrounding full-service elective PCI programs, which has a potential to hurt here everywhere. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Martin.
And Hearing Officer Mitchell, I'd like to introduce Jonathan Bailey as our next witness and can proceed to address the hearing officer.
Thank you and good morning, Hearing Officer Mitchell and the team from the OHS Planning Office. My name is Jonathan Bailey. I have the privilege of serving as the Senior Vice President of Operations and Chief Operating Officer for Stanford Health. I'd like to first just start off by saying that Stanford Health is deeply committed to the communities that we serve. I believe this has been absolutely underscored by our response to the COVID-19 pandemic through that initial wave of COVID infections that hit this community incredibly hard and has been ongoing as we have now taken a role in vaccinating our communities, having now administered more than 100,000 vaccines this week to the communities of lower Fairfield County. There are five points that I'd like to specifically call out from my testimony this morning because we are greatly concerned at the recent interest of health systems to establish low-volume percutaneous coronary intervention PCI programs without onsite cardiac surgery programs in Fairfield County, despite the fact that there are already four existing PCI programs in the area with onsite cardiac surgery. And all four of those programs are within the clinical practice guidelines established travel time range. My first point is that the applicant's proposal is inconsistent with the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan. As my colleagues have shared and has been stated within the state facility plan, that the most recent professional consensus statement addressing elective PCI without onsite cardiac surgery establishes an annual minimum threshold of 200 PCIs and provides a sole exception for those facilities serving underserved areas or those that are geographically isolated. Neither of those situations apply in the case before us today. We are an organization, as you heard from Dr. Bala, that strongly believes in where professional standards and clinical guidelines exist. We must follow them because we know they are the foundation for which we can achieve improved clinical outcomes and reduce unnecessary harm. The projected PCI volume, as stated in the original application here by the applicants, never reached that 200 annual PCI threshold. It was only after the OHS public hearing issues list that the applicant now has claimed that it will be able to meet that minimum PCI volume and that these new projected PCI volume or cases are derived through a methodology that frankly is without basis and definitely ignores regional, statewide and national trends. My second point is that the application fails to establish clear public need and for a low-volume PCI program in the proposed service area and fails to take into account the existing full-service cardiovascular programs in the region. Simply stated, there is no unmet need. Stanford Health, well-established program, which we are proud has been recognized for our high-quality outcomes, is located merely 10 miles or an 18-minute drive from Norwalk Hospital, and we have ample capacity to continue to meet the needs of the community. This simple fact negates the applicant's assertion that for patients in Norwalk Hospital service area, the option to receive elective PCI is not available to them. And to quote the applicant, they must be transferred out of their community. In fact, if you look at the data, every primary service area town is within a 30-minute drive of the service area defined of Norwalk Hospital. And frankly, four of the five towns defined have more than two or have two or more hospitals within that 30-minute range. It is clear that there is no geographic isolation that exists in the applicant's primary service area. The desire of a health system to restrict patient care to its own facilities does not constitute unmet need. My third point is that Norwalk Hospital's cardiac catheterization utilization volume and trends do not support the projected volumes in the application and go against the national and statewide projections. The applicant's historical data that they have submitted in their application demonstrates declines in both cardiac catheterization and primary PCI procedures pre-COVID. In fact, Norwalk Hospital's cardiac catheterization volumes declined more than 18% and their PCI volume, primary PCI volume, declined more than 16% between FY17 and FY19. Despite these historical declines, the applicant projects a dramatic increase in PCI and cardiac catheterization procedures without providing without providing any empirical evidence to support its assumed capture rate or its assumed annual growth rates. This downward trend is projected to increase or to continue post-pandemic. SG2, a very well-known healthcare consultancy group and was cited by the applicant in their application, projects that the applicant's service area towns will generate one point seven percent fewer PCIs between FY nineteen and FY twenty-four. Despite these projections, the applicant originally projected a staggering one hundred and ninety-five percent increase in cardiac catheterizations and a forty-three point six percent increase in primary PCIs between FY twenty and FY twenty-three. While elective PCIs are presumed to increase ten percent annually with no basis as to where that volume will come from. Further, Norwalk Hospital fails to provide any recognized basis for its newly revised method of applying a multiplier to its primary PCIs to derive its elective PCI volume. My fourth point is that the applicant's proposal will negatively impact the financial strength of the overall healthcare system in the state. The applicant's proposed PCI program is duplicative of those offered by the existing full-service cardiovascular programs and will result in unnecessary increases in expenses for the statewide healthcare system. The restated financial worksheet submitted by the applicant, worksheet A, documents that Norwalk Hospital projects that it will have incremental operating expenses of one point oh three million, one point three million and one point six million respectively for the next three years. And further, as Dr. Yekda mentioned in his testimony, that Norwalk Hospital is building a new cath lab, which we also would recognize will have a significant increased expenses to the healthcare system. Given the ready access to existing providers in the region, these incremental operating and capital expenses represent the very unnecessary frivolous spending that the CON regulations and the statutes and the healthcare policy seek to avoid. Finally, Norwalk Hospital does not provide any evidence for the, that the proposed elective PCI program will improve quality, accessibility or cost effectiveness of healthcare delivery in the region. The application contains no statistics or outcome measures that would indicate that the services that are currently being provided in this region lack quality elective PCI care or are outside of the distance of the thirty-minute drive as defined by the clinical practice guidelines. Instead, the applicant, as Dr. Martin mentions, offers links to various articles that we believe are frankly irrelevant to the application. As a reminder, Norwalk Hospital previously applied for the ability to perform elective PCIs in the hospital and OHS denied them before. There is no compelling basis for OHS to reach a different conclusion than it had previously. We believe that the OHS CON goals remain very relevant and pertinent to the situation presented through this application. Improving access to high-quality health services, minimizing duplication of services, facilitating healthcare market stability and helping to contain healthcare costs are critical to the healthcare future of the great state of Connecticut. Thank you and happy to address any questions you may have. And I failed to mention, even though I did write it up, to remind myself that I do adopt my prefiled testimony as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Do you have any additional witnesses, Attorney Monahan?
The intervenor has no additional witnesses.
All right. Anything else that you wanted to present before we go to the cross-examination phase?
Nothing from the intervenor.
Thank you. So I think what we're going to do, I think we should take about a ten-minute break here before we start cross-examination or just want to make sure the attorneys are amenable to that. We'll go to Attorney Tucci first.
Yes, thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell. That, that is fine.
Okay. And also Attorney Monahan?
That is absolutely fine.
All right. So we are going to stop for about ten minutes. We'll come back on the record at eleven twenty-five. I'll give everybody a little bit of notice before we start recording again, or not recording, but before we start the proceedings again. Thank you.
Sir, interested. What is the order of the cross-examination? Just?
According to the agenda, we're going to start with the applicant's cross-examination of the intervenor.
Thank you.
All right. See everybody in about ten minutes. Make sure that you silence your, that you mute yourself during this time. At this time, we're going to start with the applicant's cross-examination of the intervenor.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Mitchell. This is Ted Tucci and I'd ask for, as our first witness on cross-examination, Kathleen Salarde. May I proceed?
Yes.
You may. No worries.
Ms. Salarde, this is Ted Tucci. Good morning.
Hi, hi, Mr. Tucci.
I appreciate your permission to allow me to speak with you this morning. Now, you've, you've been in executive positions at Stanford Hospital for about the past twenty years, correct?
Correct.
And you were trained originally as a nurse?
Yes.
You obtained your BS in nursing in nineteen seventy-nine?
That's correct.
Would it, would it be fair to say that the focus of your efforts and involvement in the healthcare delivery system for the last twenty years or so have been primarily involved in the administration and management of hospitals and healthcare systems?
My primary roles have been leadership roles. That's correct.
Yes. As opposed to the delivery of frontline care?
I've not been at the bedside. No, that's, that's evident.
In your prefiled testimony, you noted that you would be in the presentation of your remarks, deferring to the administrative and clinical expertise of the other Stanford Health Witnesses who spoke deferring to the administrative and clinical expertise of the other Stanford Health Witnesses who spoke here this morning with respect to the subject matter of their testimony. And you would agree with me that the subject matter that brings us here today is the broad subject matter of cardiovascular care, correct?
Correct.
And in particular, what we're focusing on here is the guidelines, requirements, and standards that apply to the interventional cardiovascular procedure that is known as percutaneous coronary intervention, or PCI, right?
Correct.
And it would be fair, would it not, to say that you do not consider yourself to be a subject matter expert in the area of cardiac care and cardiovascular care, correct?
I am not a subject matter expert like the other experts that are here with me today.
Right, and that's one of the reasons why you took care to note in your written testimony that you were deferring to their expertise and their knowledge of the depth of the subject matter relating to cardiovascular care, correct?
Certainly, as it relates to the science and the interpretation of the guidelines.
Right, and so you would agree with me that you do not consider yourself to be a subject matter expert with respect to the various clinical guidelines and standards that have been discussed here this morning that apply to the interventional cardiology procedure known as PCI, right? You're not an authoritative expert on that, right?
Object asked and answered.
That's correct. If you can move to another, a different line of questioning.
Happy to. You also noted in your written testimony and in your comments to Hearing Officer Mitchell this morning, you took care to note that you have great respect for your professional colleagues at Norwalk Hospital and within the NuVance Health System. Would it be correct to conclude that of your own knowledge, you certainly don't have any basis to question the professional qualifications, skills, and competence of the interventional cardiology team at Norwalk Hospital?
I have no issue or question about the competency of the clinical team. I don't know them. My issue is around whether the application meets the CON statute as it is currently in effect in the state of Connecticut.
Okay, we'll get to that. And you'd agree with me that you don't have any basis to question the adequacy or status of the interventional cardiology or cardiac catheterization facilities that currently exist at Norwalk Hospital? That's not something that you're equipped to express an opinion on?
I have no knowledge of their facilities or the adequacy of them.
Now, you are aware of your own general knowledge, are you not, that that the current state of play in the healthcare landscape in your area is that when a patient comes to Norwalk Hospital and presents with ST elevation, STEMI profile, that is at serious risk of heart attack, that the medical professionals at Norwalk Hospital perform urgent PCI on that patient? You know that to be true, right?
That was stated today, yes.
And the opposition, in part, that Stanford Hospital has raised here to the certificate of need request, and in your position as an intervenor, is that those doctors at Norwalk Hospital who are currently doing primary PCI procedures should not be allowed to do PCI on patients who present with less intense cardiac symptoms, correct?
Object to the form of the question. I don't think that's an accurate representation of the testimony.
Well, I'm asking the witnesses. Isn't that so? You know for a fact that Norwalk Hospital doctors perform PCI procedures on people who are in imminent danger of dying of a heart attack, correct?
I know that they perform procedures. It's not, the characteristics of, or the competency, or the clinical acumen of the physicians is not in question in my testimony. It's the establishment of a program that will be underperforming.
Right, and the procedure we're talking about here is percutaneous coronary intervention, correct?
Yes, we've stated that.
Right, and that procedure is currently being performed at Norwalk Hospital, to your knowledge, right?
Emergency, yes.
Yeah, and so the question is whether or not Norwalk Hospital should be allowed to do that procedure on patients who present with less severe symptoms, isn't that right?
Object to the form of the question. The application speaks for itself.
Well, that's not an objection to, that's not an objection to the form, Hearing Officer Mitchell. I think I'm entitled by cross-examination to understand the basis for the intervenor's opposition to the application.
Oh, I'm going to ask Ms. Sillard, what is the basis for your understanding about why Norwalk Hospital should or should not be able to perform elective PCI?
Because the current CON law requires that the approval would only be provided if it was demonstrated unmet need, not provided in this hearing, that there would not be a duplication of services, which the application clearly demonstrate there would be, and that there would be an improvement in quality not demonstrated, and that there would be reduced costs, or no increased cost, pardon me, and that is also not demonstrated. That is the premise of my objection.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell. May I continue?
Yes.
So Ms. Sillard, really what we're talking about here is, and as I understand the gist of your testimony, you, your firm statement to the Office of Health Strategy is to affirm the importance of making sure that applications for CON approval apply with the controlling CON law, right? Isn't that the substance of what you're talking about here?
That is what I said.
And you would agree with me, as you stated in your written prefile testimony at page two, that you're not a legislator, correct?
No, I'm not.
And you're obviously not a lawyer, correct?
I'm not.
And you would agree you're not a representative of an executive agency of the state like the Office of Health Strategy, correct?
Correct.
I assume you do not consider yourself to be an expert in the interpretation and application of legal requirements for CONs, is that true?
I'm not an expert, but I do know them. I've read them.
All right. Now, one of the things that I think you have communicated on behalf of Stanford Health here this morning is your belief that it is a worthy goal to strive for, and I think I'm quoting from your prefile testimony, "to strive for, quote, 'the secure access to quality care for all Connecticut residents.'" You believe that's a worthy goal of the healthcare delivery system in Connecticut, correct?
Yes.
And under the current healthcare delivery system that we have in your area, a patient who has received all of his or her cardiac care from the doctors at Norwalk Hospital is currently not able to get care from his or her interventional cardiologist to do elective PCI at Norwalk Hospital, correct?
That was what was stated.
If a reasonable basis could be shown to support a conclusion that there was an unmet need for Norwalk Hospital service area patients to have elective PCI done at their hospital of choice, and doing so wouldn't be an unnecessary duplication of service in the area, would you continue to oppose this CON application?
Object to the form because that is not one of the principles as stated in the CON statute, and I think the witness has stood on her testimony that she's going by the principles as stated, not on a hypothetical situation, which I think that is proposed.
Well, Hearing Officer Mitchell, two things. First of all, I think I'm entitled by cross-examination to ask hypothetical questions, and I wasn't asking the witness a legal opinion because she's not qualified to give a legal opinion. I simply asked a factual question about whether or not, if a patient who wanted to get elective PCI at Norwalk Hospital should be allowed to get that if it could be shown reasonably that doing so would not create unnecessary duplication of services in the service area. I'm asking her if she agrees that that's a reasonable proposition or not, that's all.
I'm going to allow it.
I would hypothetically, if the Norwalk application was not a duplication of services, did meet unmet need, and met the cost and quality parameters as recommended in CON law, then I would not object, but none of those have been met.
All right. So what do you think about the concept of patient choice? Do you think that's an important consideration to be taken into account in the healthcare delivery system?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to confirm, so no more questions for Ms. Sillard because Ms. Sillard left.
She left, Hearing Officer Mitchell, because she's a very astute witness and realized I had no more questions.
And I have no redirect. I have no redirect for Ms. Sillard.
Okay, all right. So Attorney Tutu, you'll let me know who you want, your attorney, Monahan, know who you'd like to cross next?
Yes, Hearing Officer Mitchell, I'd ask for Dr. Bala.
Okay.
Good morning, Dr. Bala. This is Ted Tucci. Can you hear me all right?
I can. Good morning, Mr. Tucci.
Good morning. Now, your role at Stanford Health is in the area of clinical affairs and quality assurance, correct?
Yes.
And you're not a cardiologist, correct?
Correct.
Don't practice in not trained as an interventional cardiologist?
No. My board certifications are in internal medicine, preventive medicine, and public health.
Now, as I understood that the general sum and substance of your written prefile testimony submission, you are, as a general proposition, confirming your view that the existence of and adherence to clinical practice guidelines as a general proposition is an important thing. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay. And you're aware, are you not, that with respect to the performance of PCI procedures without onsite surgical backup, there have been published over the course of a number of years, various statements and consensus documents and other documents that could be characterized as guidelines with respect to the subject of PCI, correct?
Yes, with respect to not having onsite cardiac surgery, that's consistent with the 2014 guidelines that we discussed.
Well, yeah, there's lots of different guidelines that have been published over the years, right?
Correct.
And some of those guidelines have come from SCAI, the Society for Cardiovascular Angiography and Intervention, right?
Correct.
The American College of Cardiology, ACC, and the American Heart Association, right?
Yes.
Now, as I read your prefile testimony, I did not see any discussion or analysis in your prefile testimony that interpreted or applied the various requirements contained in those different policy or consensus statements. Am I correct about that?
My testimony stated that the application is inconsistent with current guidelines. The guidelines that were referenced speak to a consistent adverse signal associated with poor outcomes in institutions that do less than 200 PCIs.
Do you consider yourself to be an expert with respect to the various consensus documents and guidelines that have been published in the area of cardiology with respect to performance of PCI without surgical backup?
My expertise is in quality of care, safety of healthcare, and in healthcare delivery.
So the answer would be no?
Object to the argumentative response by Mr. Tucci.
Well, I'm just trying to draw a conclusion from the witness's testimony. Do you agree with me that you're not an expert in that particular area of clinical guidelines? You're not a cardiologist, correct?
I'm going to allow it. Yeah, I was going to say I was going to allow it for the purpose of clarification. I'm just going to ask both counsel, whenever there's an objection raised, to allow me time to respond to the objection. Thanks.
Thank you.
Doctor, can you respond?
I'm not a cardiology expert, but I review many different guidelines for different areas of clinical care.
All right. So with respect to your general familiarity with clinical guidelines and their application in medicine as a general proposition, would you also agree that as a general matter, it's important for that clinical guidelines be updated when necessary?
Clinical guidelines should be updated when there's a material change in the body of evidence that supports a change in practice.
And would you agree that in some instances, a material change in the body of evidence could be as a result of advancements in medicine and the advent of new technology relating to the provision of that service?
Yes.
Again, given your focus on, in your role with respect to quality assurance, I know you feel strongly that quality and safety are important factors that need to be accounted for in the delivery of healthcare to patients, correct?
Yes.
Would you also agree that in today's world, in the delivery of healthcare, that cost and value of healthcare delivery are components that should be taken into account in considering how best to get healthcare to the people of the state of Connecticut?
Yes.
And in fact, you talked about that in your prefile testimony, don't you? You refer to, in fact, some specific initiatives that the Office of Health Strategy has undertaken in the past several years to do just that, to promote the improvement of healthcare value, right?
Yes, adherence to guidelines such as the ones from 2014 are associated with improvements in care, reduction in harm, and reduction in appropriate use.
And so would you agree that where where it's reasonably clear that minimum quality standards are being met, that it's also a desirable goal to make sure that the healthcare that is being delivered is being delivered as cost-effectively and cost-efficiently as possible, right?
Object to the form of the question. I'm not sure, very candidly, with the question, if I may, in whose judgment is it reasonably clear?
Do you want to respond to the objection, Attorney Tutu?
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell. I'm asking about this witness who's a physician who's in the area of quality assurance about what his judgment is about the balance between quality and cost.
Mr. Tucci, you said minimal quality standards. My testimony pertained to consensus guidelines from three different societies. I'm not sure what you mean by minimal quality standards.
Okay, I apologize. It may be my ignorance in using the wrong terminology. My question is really very simple. All other things being equal, assuming that healthcare is being delivered at the appropriate level of quality and safety, would you agree that it is also important to ensure that that quality and safe care is delivered as cost-efficiently as possible?
Yes, if you mean that the appropriate level of quality of care equates with following professional consensus guidelines.
Okay. And so, for example, in today's world where we're looking to control healthcare costs, costs, one, one way that the overall cost of healthcare could be reduced and delivered more efficiently is to eliminate the running of duplicative tests, right? And one way that the cost of healthcare could be streamlined and made more efficient would be to eliminate the emergency transport of patients if it was not otherwise necessary to do that, right?
That's the form of the question.
Respond, Attorney Tutu.
Well, I'm, I'm, Attorney Mitchell, I'm at a loss to understand what the objection to the form of the question is.
The form of the question. Hearing Officer, if I may, I will state the form, why the form is, in my view, inappropriate.
Absolutely, yeah.
The witness has been testifying repeatedly in the context of the consensus document and consensus requirements, yet the questions seem to tail off back into isolated instances or hypotheticals without connecting the witness's prior statement. So I want there to be, the form of the question, to me, suggests a gap and a perhaps confusion on the record about the continuity of this witness's testimony.
Attorney Tutu.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell. I, I, I don't think there's any gap at all. I'm asking this witness, who is a physician, who is expert in the subject of quality assurance, to give, to give the Hearing Officer in OHS the benefit of his view on strategies that exist to balance both quality and cost. That exists generally in medicine, and it can be applied specifically to the facts of this hearing.
Okay, I'm gonna allow a few more questions on that issue, as long as they're not unduly repetitive.
This will be the last one, Hearing Officer.
Tucci, can you repeat your question?
Yeah, doctor, my, my question is, if we're talking about achieving the goal of delivering healthcare as cost efficiently as possible, would you agree that where, where circumstances are appropriate, avoiding the unnecessary emergency transport of a patient from one facility to another would be one strategy to help bring down the cost of healthcare?
One was focused solely on cost, that would be correct, but the guidelines from 2014 clearly state that in the interest of quality and safety, transfer is unnecessary if it can be achieved within 30 minutes. That's a situation where quality and safety outweigh any cost considerations.
All right. Doctor, you concluded your prefile testimony with, with, with this statement. I'm gonna quote it to you. On behalf of Stanford Health, you, you indicated that Stanford Health, quote, "encourages OHS to continue to be guided by science and not by the business desires of health systems." That, that was what you wrote in your prefile testimony. Do you recall that?
Yes.
So with respect to the performance of elective PCI, if it could be reasonably concluded that the performance of elective PCI could be done safely at Norwalk Hospital without surgical backup, do you agree that that's an important factor that OHS should be guided by? That, that scientific factor?
My comment pertained to the reasonableness of the volume that's being proposed.
I didn't ask you about what your comment pertained to. I'm asking you now, you said in your sworn testimony that you submitted to OHS that OHS should be guided by science and not business desires. Didn't you say that?
Yeah, I, may I object to the argumentative tone, and the witness gave a very reasoned answer to the question, to explain his answer, and while Mr. Tucci may not be pleased with the answer, I don't, don't make that tone in response to the witness's appropriate.
I'm gonna sustain.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell. I apologize for my tone. My, my wife often reminds me that I need to be careful about that. So let me, let me just re-ask the question because I think it's fair cross-examination, and I believe that Hearing Officer Mitchell, the purpose of cross-examination is not to elicit explanation, but to elicit direct answers to specific questions, which is all I was attempting to do. So, doctor, if the evidence showed, and it could be reasonably concluded, that it was safe to do elective PCI procedures on patients at Norwalk Hospital, even though there is no CABG surgical backup, do you agree that that is a factor that OHS should take into account?
Yes, if the safety is predicated on volume, which is what the basis of the safe, the ability to do this procedure safely is, is that a volume of over 200 PCIs annually can be achieved? That's what the guidelines say.
So, so to modify my question, then, if, 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 if there was a reasonable basis to conclude, in your view, that that volume threshold was reasonably attainable, you would think that, you would, you would agree that that's an important factor for OHS to be guided by in terms of being able to do elective procedures without surgical backup, true?
Yes, if it was reasonably attainable.
And if it was reasonably attainable, then you would agree with me that Stanford Health's business desire to retain elective PCI procedures that formerly were transferred from Norwalk Hospital is, would be a less important factor for OHS to consider, even though it might result in Stanford Hospital losing some elective business, right?
Object to the form calls for speculation about what OHS may consider.
Attorney Tutu, any response on the objection?
Respectfully, Hearing Officer Mitchell, it doesn't call for speculation at all. It states a factual premise, and asks the witness if that factual premise is proven by the evidence, what his reaction to it is.
I'm gonna allow it.
Meyer is not the, the business interest of Stanford Health. It's in clinical affairs and quality. In general, shifting volume from one center to another will result in a dilution of procedures across the region.
Thank you very much. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bala.
Thank you.
All right, Hearing Officer Mitchell, I'd request Dr. Bailey be available for cross-examination.
And just for clarification, Ted, Mr. Bailey and Dr. Martin, I don't know if you were going for one or the other.
Yeah, no, I apologize. That was my mistake. Thank you, Mr. Monahan. I meant Mr. Bailey.
Correct.
Can you hear me okay?
I can. Good morning.
And good morning to you. Now, back on September 25th of 2020, you testified in opposition to the Greenwich Hospital CON for the approval of elective PCI, correct?
That is correct.
And you're here today opposing the Norwalk Hospital CON request for approval to do elective PCI, correct?
That is correct.
In your prefile testimony at page two, at the bottom of page two, and I'm just gonna quote a portion of it, you indicate, "I am testifying today on behalf of Stanford Health in strong opposition to the application submitted by the Norwalk Hospital Association, seeking authorization to establish elective percutaneous coronary intervention services at Norwalk Hospital." Do you recall submitting that written prefile testimony?
I do.
And are you aware that large portions of the prefile testimony that you submitted in opposition to the Norwalk CON application are word for word the same thing that you said when you opposed the Greenwich PCI application?
I have.
I mean, object, you saying, I don't need to be too picky, is similar in substance, or are you saying verbatim?
I'm, I'm asking you, I'm asking the witnesses, I think it was very clear, are you, are you aware that the portion of your testimony that I just quoted in virtually word for word is the same testimony that you gave when you opposed the Greenwich PCI application? It's a very simple question.
I guess I can ask clarifying, are you asking about the words you just quoted to be the same that were actually submitted in the previous, so whatever forty words that looked used to state?
Well, well, Mr. Bailey, you, you, I assume you read your written prefile testimony that you submitted here in this proceeding, right?
That's correct.
And so I'm asking, my, my question then is, are you aware that, that significant portions of the written prefile testimony that you submitted in this hearing substantially mirror the same testimony that you gave in writing in a proceeding seven months ago? That's all.
So let me answer your question this way. I, I did not do a side-by-side page turn in comparing the two, so I'm hard-pressed to be able to answer and address your question to your satisfaction. But I would say in general, no, I would not agree with you that they are substantially the same. In fact, I believe there are significant additional points that I point to in this overall submission, only, I believe, at 10 points, and if you would compare that to what I submitted before for the Greenwich application, there was nowhere close to 10 points being made. So no, I disagree with your assessment of that.
All right, thank you very much. So I, I assume you would have no problem with the Office of Health Strategy taking administrative notice of your prior testimony and looking at it in comparison with your testimony today, correct?
I believe our attorney has admitted that as prefile in his opening comments. I, I think that's already been stated.
All right. Now, you, among the points that you have raised in opposition to the CON application is a, a point that you made in your written testimony and that you reiterated orally here today, your belief that the Norwalk Hospital application has not adequately taken into consideration the other full-service cardiovascular programs in the region, correct?
That is correct. I believe that is a missing statement or missing assessment.
All right. Now, you acknowledge, do you not, that there are no elective PCI programs in the Norwalk Hospital service area?
Can you clarify, when you're saying service area, are you talking their primary service area or the adjacency is defined by the state?
Well, I think the question was very clear, Mr. Bailey, and I'm actually, if you need clarification, perhaps you could go to page 11 of your prefile testimony?
I'm on page 11.
Let me direct you to Romans 7. Do you have that in front of you?
That is correct.
While the applicant states, I'm quoting, "While the applicant states that there are no elective PCI programs within its proposed service area," do you see that written statement in your prefile testimony?
I didn't.
You agree with what, with, as a matter of fact, you agree, do you not, that there are no elective PCI programs within the Norwalk Hospital primary service area, correct?
Look, object, are you asking if he agrees that he, he stated, he, I think he used the words, he referred to the, what the application state, that maybe I'm misunderstanding what you said.
I'll ask the question again, Hearing Officer Mitchell. The, the Norwalk Hospital's application stating that there are no elective PCI programs within its, its primary service area, is that an accurate statement?
Yes, that is an accurate statement.
Now, the four, the four programs that you indicate that OHS should be concerned about, those full-service cardiovascular programs, one of those programs is Stanford Hospital, correct?
That is correct.
And the other full-service cardiac programs would be Danbury Hospital, which is part of the NuVance system, right?
Yes.
St. Vincent's Hospital, which is part of the Hartford Healthcare System, correct?
Yes.
Bridgeport Hospital, which is part of the Yale system, correct?
Correct.
And so, as I understand the gist of your testimony, what you're concerned about is the creation of what you would view to be unnecessarily duplicative elective PCI services in the face of these existing four system programs that are in the region, right?
I believe you've articulated my point. Yes.
And the, in intervening in the proceeding here today, Stanford Hospital, it would be fair to say, is advocating that OHS should maintain the status quo with respect to the ability to have elective PCI services performed in the region as you've described it, right?
I would characterize what I'm advocating for as, as Stanford Health is advocating for, is that the state continue to enforce the already established regulatory requirements and follow what is prescribed within the state facilities and services plan.
The current, the current state of play in the area in which Stanford Hospital operates is that patients who go to Norwalk Hospital and who otherwise qualify for and need elective PCI procedures, you're, you're here on behalf of Stanford Health advocating that those patients continue to be transferred to some alternative care site, correct?
I, I would characterize what I would say is, I advocate that the state continue to follow the consensus guidelines, which I believe Dr. Bala and Dr. Martin have articulated from a clinical perspective.
Mr. Bailey, I didn't, Mr. Bailey, excuse me, I didn't ask you about consensus guidelines. I asked you a question that simply calls for a yes or a no answer, and the question is, is your position on behalf of Stanford Health that a patient goes to Norwalk Hospital today, who otherwise medically qualifies to receive elective PCI, should get transferred to an alternative care site that is approved to perform PCI, elective PCI? Yes or no?
I'm gonna object, that is a slightly different question, and the question's been asked and answered.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. Let me just let Attorney Tutu respond, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on the objection, but go ahead, Attorney Tutu.
Yeah, Hearing Officer Mitchell, I'm, I'm, I'm simply, again, attempting to understand the basis for the intervenor's opposition, and I did not ask the witness a question about the witness's opinion or view regarding standards or guidelines or what have you. I'm asking about circumstances relating to the actual delivery of healthcare. I don't think that's a hypothetical question. I don't think it calls for speculation, and, and it appears I'm having difficulty getting answers to basic factual questions.
Let me ask Attorney Monahan, how is, how is the question different? I think you said that that was one of your objections.
Because this witness is not a clinician, and this witness has couched every answer in relation to that type of factual question with the basis of his expertise, which goes to the policy and the procedures that surround why patients are transferred, not purely to the clinical needs. And that question, and that, let me finish, and that question included a hypothetical that, that the PCI would be reasonably be able to, would be able to be performed, and based on what this witness has said, that is not his testimony in light of the standards that govern elective PCI.
May I be heard on that objection, Hearing Officer Mitchell?
Yes.
If, if the position of counsel for intervener is that the witness who's currently under oath and is testifying is not a clinician and is not qualified to speak about clinical issues relating to cardiovascular to speak about clinical issues relating to cardiovascular care, then I would move to strike his prefiled testimony in all areas where the witness has given opinions about how to interpret the professional guidelines of various societies and what those standards are, and expressing opinions as a non-physician about what appropriate care and safety guidelines are for the delivery of cardiovascular care. Move to strike.
Well, I, I wait till I'm told I can be heard.
Go ahead, go ahead, Attorney Monahan.
Ms. Mitchell, we all know that this application involves clinical and non-clinical expertise. It involves public policy, legislative issues, administrative action, cost savings across the board. Not only doctors are qualified to testify in this proceeding, and indeed, I don't know how many physicians, with all due respect, are sitting on the OHS panel. So if that question was, if that objection had any merit, then we would only have to have physicians listening to this and providing over this hearing. This witness has every right to testify. If Mr. Tucci wants to hear the basis for his, this witness's opinion, why doesn't he just say, please give me the basis for your opinion?
What about the motion to strike all of his prefiled testimony that relates to?
I object to that strenuously. It would be an egregious error, and it would be, it would be a, an absolute injustice.
So I'm just going to say with regard to the motion to strike, I mean, this is an administrative hearing, so when we look at the record, we weigh all of the evidence accordingly. And with regard to the objection, I'm going to allow Attorney Tucci to just go ahead and ask the question once more. And then I'm going to ask that the witness just respond to the question as directly as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey, I'll try to state the question as simply as possible. Is it Stanford Health's position that patients who otherwise receive care today at Norwalk Hospital and who qualify for elective PCI should continue to be required to go to alternative care sites to get that care?
Yes, our position is that they should continue to follow those established guidelines.
In your prefiled testimony, you generally speak about the Norwalk Hospital CON proposal and its potential impact or threat to the existing four full-service programs in the region as you've defined it. Do you, is it, is it your opinion that the Norwalk Hospital CON request threatens the ability of the four regional programs we've discussed to continue to meet their PCI volume thresholds?
Can you point me to just, just point me to where you're at in my prefiled testimony, so I can refresh my memory where you're reading from?
You can take, I wasn't reading, but you can take a look at page 13 of your prefiled testimony.
Sure, okay. And I hate to ask you to restate the question. I was thumbing through my papers as you were doing that.
Well, sure, why don't you focus on page 13, Mr. Bailey? And you have a chart there, right? And right below that chart, I'll read portions of your prefiled testimony. Partially quoting, quote, "The only way for applicant to achieve its projected volumes is to divert patients from existing providers already serving the market." There, you're referring to the four system programs that you identified earlier in your testimony, correct?
That's correct.
And then later on in your written remarks, you have a sentence that begins recent efforts to increase elective PCI programs. See that sentence?
Yes, that's correct.
And you go on to state in that sentence that these efforts to expand elective PCI, quote, all, among other things, quote, "all threaten the ability of existing programs to continue to meet PCI volume thresholds," end quote. Have I read that accurately?
Yeah.
And so my question is, is it your testimony that approval of Norwalk Hospital's CON request raises a serious, a serious threat to the ability of Stanford Hospital, Danbury Hospital, Bridgeport Hospital, St. Vincent's Hospital to continue to meet what you believe to be adequate PCI volume thresholds?
I believe that based on the fact that the market has already seen declines, as I stated in my written testimony and as I gave in my introductory comments, and the fact that there is a continued projection of decline in the service area that we know for, at least the Norwalk Hospital service area, that yes, the only way for those volumes we met would be to have a decline impact and a negative impact to volumes that are going to other facilities within, within this 30-mile range that we speak about.
Does that mean you believe that approval of this CON would pose a threat to those four programs to meet minimum volume thresholds?
So I believe that the question you're asking me would cause me to speculate about what exactly how those volumes would and the total number of cases by certain geographic regions, by certain hospitals. So I'm not sure I can answer your question, would they cause them to go below the threshold number? But what I can answer for you is that yes, I do believe they would have negative and adverse impacts on their volumes that could potentially impact their overall threshold volumes.
So even though, so you can't speculate, but you believe it potentially could impact, correct?
I believe I answered the question on that, yes.
All right, let's turn to some numbers. Please look at the CON application, page 15, 16.
Just allow me, if I can, to get that out, because I have it immediately in front of me.
Repeat the pages of the application.
CON application, page 15, 16.
I have them in front of me.
All right, if I could just direct your attention to the bottom of page 15 and then over to the top of page 16, I want to ask you a few questions about the data that appear there.
I got it, yeah, I got it.
So at this portion of the application, Norwalk Hospital has listed patient transfer data for a period of August 1, 2019, to March 19 of 2020, for patients that were transferred from Norwalk Hospital because they required some type of follow-up cardiac clinical care. Do you see that?
I do see that.
And the, the data that Norwalk Hospital presented showing that during that seven-month or so period, 13 patients who presented to Norwalk Hospital ended up being transferred to Bridgeport Hospital, which is part of the Yale System, right?
I see that noted here.
And to state the obvious, Bridgeport Hospital and the Yale System have not intervened to oppose this CON application, right?
I, I believe that it's actually true based on what Hearing Officer Mitchell opened up with her comments.
And the data further showed that during that seven-month period, there were 55 patients who were required to go to St. Vincent's Hospital or who elected to go to St. Vincent's Hospital because they couldn't get cardiac care at Norwalk Hospital. And you would agree with me, as a matter of fact, that St. Vincent's, as part of the Hartford Health System, did not request intervenor status to oppose Norwalk Hospital's request for elective PCI, correct?
I honestly can't speak whether they requested it, but I do know that they are not granted an intervenor status based again on what Hearing Officer Mitchell stated.
Okay. And during the same seven-month time period, a total of six patients who could not receive follow-up coronary cardiovascular care at Norwalk Hospital ended up going to Stanford Hospital, right?
I see that's what's stated here, yes.
One of the things that you have talked about is the PCI procedure data that has been the subject of this application. And you included some information concerning Stanford Hospital's experience with PCI procedures in your prefiled testimony, correct?
I'm not sure I know exactly what question you're asking about what we cited in our prefiled testimony about Stanford Hospital's procedure volume.
Okay, well, I'm asking about your prefiled testimony.
Yeah, yeah.
And in particular, to assist you, I'd ask you to go to page 12 of the testimony you submitted. And you, you, you put a chart in your prefiled testimony at the top part of the page, which you've described with the label "Regional PCI Trends." Do you see that?
I do.
And it shows, for example, in fiscal year 2019, that the total inpatient and outpatient PCI procedures done at Stanford Hospital were 477, right?
I would, I would agree with you, yes.
And you also reported for fiscal year 2020, a total of your inpatient and outpatient PCI procedures at 388, right?
Yes.
And 2020 was the year that all of us were required to stay home starting in March when the pandemic hit. Do you agree with that?
I do agree that was when the pandemic hit.
Right, and, and so if we look back at the experiential data from the seven-month period that we talked about earlier in terms of patients from the Norwalk service area, from August of 2019 to March of 2020, you agreed with me that there were a total of six patients who ended up going to Stanford Hospital for some form of further cardiovascular care, right?
That's correct.
And as a matter of simple math, if, if that experiential data was consistent throughout the course of time, the reduction of six or 10 or 12 PCI procedures coming from the Norwalk service area would not have in any way a material impact on Stanford Hospital's ability to maintain a high-quality PCI intervention program. Would you agree with that?
So what I can answer your question is, I can follow.
Well, I asked you, I'm sorry, sir. I asked you a very simple question that, that, that is based on the numbers that we've all just talked about. And so I'm asking you very simply, do you agree, yes or no, that a reduction going forward of as many as a dozen cases, let's just say, from what your existing volume trends are for PCI, would not have a materially adverse effect on your health system's ability to maintain volume thresholds?
May I object to the interruption of the witness's answer? And allow the witness to answer as he sees best, answer that question?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna direct him to answer the specific question, yes or no. If there's any follow-up, then Attorney Monahan, you can make that follow-up.
Thank you. So answer your question, based on the math you presented, the no, that would not have a material impact based on the math you presented?
All right, now, I'm going to try to move along here, but I want to cover some of the other sort of highlight areas that I understood from your written prefile and your remarks under oath here today. And as I understand it, a fair characterization of one of the other concerns that you have raised is that the Office of Health Strategy should be concerned about a declining PCI volume in what you characterize as the region. And for purposes of our discussion, we'll talk about the region, meaning the four full-service programs that we've talked about earlier. Am I right that that's one of the concerns that you raised?
It is absolutely correct.
Okay. Is it, do you believe that within a geograph, have you seen, do you believe that within a geographic region that there may be factors that apply to particular institutions or a particular location within that region that could influence procedure volume in a way that may be different when you look at the region as a whole?
I, I'm sorry, I have no idea what the question actually is trying to ask me to provide an opinion on.
All right, okay. Let's look at your chart on page 12, sir. Do you have it in front of you?
I do.
You've, you've defined the region that, that you would like OHS to focus on, to be comprised of Bridgeport, Danbury, St. Vincent's, and Stanford Hospitals, correct?
That's correct.
And you've shown for fiscal years 2016 through fiscal year 2020 what the actual volume numbers are for PCI for those different institutions. Correct?
Yes.
And you're asking OHS to draw conclusions about what you believe are regional trends shown by that PCI volume, correct?
I believe what I'm trying to do here is to demonstrate that there is a decline that has been noted here that follows in line with what has also been projected and stated as well as other national trends.
When you look at the region as a whole, correct?
Yes, when we look at the region holistically here, I think we've cited the, I've cited the percentage decreases.
All right, now, sir, I'd ask you to look at your chart at the top line for Bridgeport Hospital. Do you have that data in view?
I do.
Would you agree with me that for fiscal year 2016, Bridgeport Hospital reported a total PCI inpatient outpatient volume of 288?
That is correct.
In fiscal year 27, Bridgeport Hospital reported a total PCI volume of 349, correct?
That's correct.
In 2018, Bridgeport Hospital reported a total inpatient outpatient PCI volume of 390, correct?
Correct.
In 2019, for that fiscal year, Bridgeport Hospital reported a total inpatient outpatient PCI volume of 489, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So from 2016 to the four-year period ending in 2019, as a matter of simple mathematics, sir, do you agree that the PCI volume at Bridgeport Hospital, part of the region that you've defined, increased by 200 cases?
I would agree it's increased by 201 increases as they've reported.
Thank you. Moving along, sir, again, I think one of the sort of major topic areas that you presented was a concern about the granting of the CON application potentially having an adverse effect on the financial strength of what I think you characterized in your prefiled testimony at page six as the overall healthcare system in the state. Is that, is that in fact a concern that you have expressed to the Office of Healthcare Strategy?
Yes, it is in fact a concern.
Is, can you point me to any data in the 13 pages of your prefiled testimony that shows how allowing elective PCI shows how allowing elective PCI at Norwalk Hospital will jeopardize the financial health of any hospital in Connecticut?
I do not have any, any data in my, that points to an impact on a hospital, but I do believe, and what my point is here, is that the impact is to the statewide health system. And when we increase operating expenses, as stated and proposed by Norwalk Hospital here, at 1.08, 1.3, 1.6 million, anytime a healthcare system increases costs in their operating basis or capital, has a deleterious effect on the overall cost of healthcare system holistically. Those costs are passed on elsewhere, and it has impacts that are oftentimes hard to immediately define.
All right, Mr. Bailey, I'm a little confused by that. I'm not, I'm not a chief operating officer, but I did note that you noted that if this CON were approved, that Norwalk Hospital would experience some additional costs. That's the point you were making, correct?
That's the point that I am calling out that was based in their worksheet that they submitted.
Right. And that would be the cost associated with providing more services to patients than Norwalk was previously allowed to provide because of CON restrictions, right?
That's correct.
So presumably, if Norwalk Hospital is providing services that it was previously not allowed to provide, you would agree with me, as a basic elementary matter, they would be able to charge for those services, at least a portion of them?
Jump to the forum.
Attorney Tucci?
Yes.
I just wanted to see if you had any response to the objection.
No, I don't, because I think it's fairly clear that when, the question I'm asking the witness, who is, I think, has financial expertise, is that you, if you're investing cost in providing services, the idea is you're going to generate revenue, and revenue offsets cost.
Attorney Monahan, any response?
Well, I believe that we, Attorney Tucci introduced the concept of charges, which was, was not the thrust of what the testimony was and what the answer to the question was. So I think the thrust of the questions that led up to that, and the answers dealt with increased costs for services that would be duplicating others. So I think they are, I think that there was an, the charges, I believe, was an inappropriate form of that question in follow-up to the line of questioning that was being presented.
I don't think I, hearing Officer Mitchell, I'm sorry. I'm trying to really make this as simple as possible. The witness testified about cost, and that, and that we reported that there would be increased cost. I'm simply asking a basic elemental question about the, the concept of increased cost associated with allowing more procedures to be done. And if more procedures are being done, therefore, revenue is generated. I don't think that's a controversial concept, or one that's hard to understand.
All right, I'm gonna allow it.
Would you mind understating your question?
You know what, I'm gonna move on. All right, now, I am gonna spend some time on this next topic, Mr. Bailey, because I think it's one that you have provided some extensive discussion around. And that's the issue of volume projections, right? You would agree that your, the substance of your testimony here today is that you would like the OHS to conclude that the projected volume figures Norwalk Hospital has presented are not backed up by what you describe as empirical evidence. I believe you used that term at page 10 of your prefile testimony.
Yes, that's correct.
That is right?
That's correct.
All right. And I assume as part of your preparation for coming here today to testify, you reviewed Norwalk Hospital's response, response to the OHS hearing issues, which set forth information concerning recent utilization. Did you review that?
I did.
And in reviewing that, you would agree with me, would you not, that those responses another document.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna take a moment to get a drink of water, if that's okay?
reported empirical information for fiscal year 2021, actual to date and projected, showing
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
Okay, thank you, here. You were shaking your head no, I thought maybe I'd have to go without it.
annualized volume of 108 cardiac cath cases and 82 primary PCIs.
No, you can go.
That's what the empirical information is that was set forth in the response that my client submitted to OHS. Would you agree with that?
I, before answering your question, I'd just like to be able to point you to the information, so that I, as being under oath, as you pointed out, I answer it correctly.
Sure.
So you're referring to the table Norwalk Hospital cardiac cath and PCI cases trend? I don't have a page number on it, where it has FY '21, annualized 1.08 plus 82, adds up to 190?
Yes.
I see that.
I'm just gonna note that my colleague, Brian Carney, was having some technical problems, and he is trying to access the hearing again. So I'm just gonna ask that we wait until he is back, because he controls a lot of the functions related to muting and monitoring individuals who want to speak when I can't see them. So I'm just gonna ask that we hold on just for another minute or two until he's back.
While we're on pause, this is the court reporter, if it's possible, if we could get a list of all the witnesses and the spellings of their names to save some time later?
Absolutely, I can make sure that we get you that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We're gonna start again in about a minute. No one's, someone's not muted, I just, there we go. Just one more minute, and we'll go back on the record. Robert, I just wanted to check in with you on the list of names for all of the witnesses. Did you want, we're gonna, we're probably gonna have to take a break. Did you want me to give them to you during the break?
That would be fine.
Okay, all right, we'll make sure you get them.
Thank you very much.
All right. Attorney Tucci, are you ready? Do you need additional time?
No, thank you, hearing Officer Mitchell, ready to go.
Okay, so we can go ahead and resume. I'm just thinking, before, before you continue with your questions, I'm wondering if both counsel would be amenable to taking a break at 1:00?
That's perfectly fine.
Okay, I just didn't want to interrupt your flow, if you, if you wanted to continue on, but is that okay, Attorney Monahan?
Absolutely, okay.
Okay.
Hearing Officer Mitchell, I, I'm ever the eternal optimist, I only have a little bit longer for Mr. Bailey. I was thinking I might be able to wrap up the last cross-examination. I'm not sure I could do it precisely by one. So maybe, maybe what makes the most sense to do is just finish with Mr. Bailey, and then take a break when we're done with him, if that's acceptable?
That works for me. What about you, Attorney Monahan?
That works for me, too.
Okay, all right. So you can proceed when you're ready.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bailey, we're back.
Yes, we are.
And we were, we were chatting before the break about the data, empirical information presented in Norwalk Hospital's responses to the OHS public hearings list, public hearing issues. And I'd ask you just to go back to that page, and I want to direct your attention to the graph pertaining to Danbury Hospital cardiac cath and PCI case trends. Do you see that?
I do see that.
And this is a particular set of data reported for fiscal years '17 through '20, and then fiscal year '21 for approximately the first six months, right?
That's what it states, yes.
Right. And, and of course, you, you, you know that Danbury Hospital is approved to provide both primary PCI services to patients, but also elective PCI services to patients, right?
I do know that.
And looking at the various data that's reported as Danbury Hospital's actual case trend experience, I want to go through each of the fiscal years with you, and look at primary PCI and elective PCI in each of these years, and talk to you about what that empirical information shows. So focusing your attention on fiscal year 2017, you would agree with me that Danbury Hospital reported 88 primary PCI cases in 2017, and a total of 329 elective PCI cases in that same fiscal year, correct?
Yes, I see that written in the chart there.
So in looking at the relationship between the number of primary cases versus the number of elective cases, there are about four times as many elective cases, right?
I am following that simple math, yes.
Okay. And for 2018, we'll do the same thing. You see that Danbury Hospital reported 63 primary procedures, and a total of 302 elective procedures. And you would agree with me that the ratio there is approximately five times as many elective cases as primary PCI cases, right?
I am following your math, yes.
And for 2019, the data show that Danbury Hospital's actual experience was 79 primary PCI procedures for patients, as compared with 367 elective PCI procedures performed on patients in that fiscal time period. And again, we're talking roughly about five times as many elective cases as primary cases, right?
You're on FY '19?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, I would, that's probably more around four times, not five, but yes.
Apologize, I'll go with your rounding number, agreed. And, and again, to complete the exercise, with regard to the fiscal year 2020, what that data show is that Danbury Hospital performed primary PCI procedures on 76 patients, as compared with elective PCI procedures for a total of 339 patients. And again, we're roughly in that approximately four times ballpark, right?
Yes, I'm following the math, yep.
Do you, do you believe that the trending data for Danbury Hospital, showing the relationship between the number of primary PCIs and elective PCIs, roughly mirrors the experience that you know to be the case at Stanford Hospital?
I have not done the math to do a comparative analysis. I cannot answer your question.
Well, have you, have you, in getting ready for this hearing that we're here today, did you take, did you take a look at what Stanford Hospital's breakdown was in terms of the, the, the number of primary cases versus elective cases?
Asked and answered.
No, it hasn't been asked and answered. It's the first time I've asked the question, Attorney, hearing Officer Mitchell.
I'm gonna, all right.
So certainly, we looked at our most recent data of elected PCIs, and we've also looked at our primary PCIs, as we do on a regular basis, as just doing business. I have not done the math, I would not be able to cite, I believe was your original question, was whether this follows a similar trend, quite frankly, and simply did not do the math to know whether that is the case.
That's fine. Let me, let me break it down a little bit more. Let's go, let's go to page 12 of your prefile testimony. Do you have it in front of you?
I do.
You reported data for Stanford Hospital in that chart, correct?
That is correct.
And the data you reported concerned the actual performance of PCI procedures at Stanford Hospital, for example, in fiscal year 2017.
Correct.
Right? You reported it, and you reported it based on whether the procedure was done inpatient or outpatient, but nevertheless, you reported a total number of PCIs- but nevertheless, you reported a total number of PCI procedures performed at your institution of 592, correct?
That is correct.
How many were elective and how many were primary?
I do not have that answer. I don't have that, that information.
Oh, you have that, or you're sitting in Stanford Hospital. Do you have that data available?
I do not have it in front of me at the moment.
Where is it?
The Hearing Officer, if, if, if there would be a request for a late file, we certainly can prepare it, but we do not have it here in front of us.
Yeah, if they don't have it, they, you know, they can't produce it at this moment. Maybe we will file a request for a late file, but that is going to be up to me after I determine what we need from the team and then we move on.
So I'll continue. So Mr. Bailey, you've indicated that in getting ready for today's hearing, you didn't do the math in terms of a breakout between the number of primary cases done at Stanford Hospital versus the number of cases done electively for percutaneous coronary intervention, right?
That is how I answered that question, and there's no reason for which I would do that calculation.
Have you ever been involved in or done a similar calculation in the past?
Can you, or are you speaking about PCI procedures, or are you just talking about doing a ratio?
Yeah, no, it's very simple. I don't mean to overcomplicate this. My question is very simple. At any time in the past, have you ever been involved in, or do you know of, any existing breakdown showing in a fiscal year, how many primary PCI cases Stanford Hospital did and how many elective PCI cases Stanford Hospital did?
I have not, I have not been in any previous conversations where we calculated our ratio of what our PCIs. I've never, I have not seen any data in front of me to, to their, doing that, or doing those calculations. We have no, again, to go back, we don't have any basis for why we would do that calculation.
All right. You, you, you obviously agree with me that you did participate in and testify at the, as an, as an intervenor in opposing the Greenwich Hospital CON for elective PCI, correct?
That's correct.
And in the, in the, in your, in Stanford Health's capacity as an intervener in the Greenwich Hospital CON request for elective PCI, Stanford Hospital submitted a late file in that proceeding showing a breakdown in 27 of, 2017 of a primary versus elective PCI procedures, showing that you did six times as many elected PCIs as primary. Are you aware of that?
I don't have my, I don't have my prefiled test, or the testimony or the transcript in front of me from that hearing, so.
Are you aware that in 2018, Stanford Hospital's experience was that it did 51 primary PCIs and 335 elective PCIs, or six times as many elective as primary?
Again, I don't have the data in front of me, so it's impossible for me to be able to answer your question, I'm sorry.
Are you aware in 2019, Stanford Hospital reported doing an actual number of 65 primary PCIs and a total of 337 elective PCIs, or approximately five times as many elective procedures as primary?
Hearing Officer, yeah, just, and I'm not doubting what is being read, but can we just, can I just understand what it is, it is that Attorney Tucci is reading from so that we can understand where the numbers are coming from?
I'm reading from.
I believe this, oh, go ahead.
Your Honor, Officer, I apologize.
No, no, no. I believe that this is from the Greenwich hearing, you know, prefiled testimony from that, but go ahead, Attorney Tucci.
Yes, your understanding is correct, Hearing Officer Mitchell.
Yeah, so again, Attorney Tucci, I don't have the information in front of me on any of the years that you might cite, so it's impossible for me to answer your question.
What about fiscal year 2020, last year? You have, you know what those numbers were?
I do not.
Well, let me refresh your memory. In 2020, your institution reported doing 54 primary PCIs and 255 elective PCIs. Again, approximately five times as many elective procedures as primary procedures. You don't recall that?
I don't recall the specifics of the data.
I have no more questions for this witness.
All right, so let me just ask. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Was that you, Attorney Monahan?
Yes, I apologize for raising my hand. I was.
That's okay. That's okay.
I would, do I have the opportunity to just ask a couple of questions on redirect?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, there were a number of questions about the charts in your testimony, your prefiled testimony in this matter on page 12 in, in connection with the regional PCI trends. Do you recall that line of questioning where I made an objection, it was overruled, and then you were asked to answer the question? I do recall. Was there a point during that line of questioning that you had any reason to describe something greater than what was in that chart in the Section 7 as a whole? Yeah, so I believe what I was trying to get to on Section 7, which really speaks to the aspects of the full-service cardiovascular programs in a declining market, is when we, it's impossible to really separate out all the full-service programs in itself. And then when you're looking at multiple full, multiple hospital systems applying for bringing in low-volume PCI programs without the onsite cardiac surgery, it's impossible to fully comprehend the ripple effect that could occur in a situation where there would be notorious effects on the volumes at hand, and so.
Objection, move to strike. Objection, move to strike. This witness is not qualified to give that testimony. It's pure speculation. He's offering an opinion without any qualification or basis to give it. He's not a cardiac expert. He's now, he's now giving a prediction or an evaluation or an opinion that could only be given by an expert in the field. Move to strike it.
Attorney Monahan?
Attorney Mitchell, with that motion to strike, if that's the basis for a motion to strike, there's nearly every single written prefiled testimony that will be, receive a similar motion on the, on the applicant's side. This is a chief operating officer of Stanford Healthcare. He crosses the lines between clinical data analysis, financial data analysis, market analysis, and he receives information from a number of different experts. This is not a trial where there has been a designated expert on a particular minute, narrow-minded scope. So the, the fact that I have asked this witness to embellish on the testimony that he's presented to you, in my view, is fair for you to hear based on his experience in his role at Stanford Health.
I'm gonna allow it, I'm no, I'm gonna allow it briefly. As this is an administrative hearing, you know, I do, we're going to look at all of the evidence and give it the appropriate weight based upon everything that we hear, so I just want to hear what he has to say.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell. So, so just to wrap up, my, my comment on that is when, at any point in time in this situation or others where services are coming in and they are going to be duplicative or areas where multiple systems are coming in on an effort, and now we've got services that are already at crucial volume perspectives, those will have a compounding factor on them that will have negative impact on healthcare organizations, and I'll keep it at the broad aspect that there are four already existing programs in this geographic region that provide these services, and they will have, based on previous experiences of seeing these type of things play out, where they will have a negative impact on their volumes. And that can have, I just want to cite this example. I do have it in my written testimony, so it's not new information, but we have a TAVR program under an aspect relative to CMS's national coverage decision. We are to retain a 300 volume, PCI minimum volume. So there are aspects that may not be on the forefront awareness of these type of impacts, but as an organization, why we are so concerned, reducing our volume may have downstream impacts that may not be overly apparent when looking at it at just the surface.
I'll loop Attorney Monahan.
Yeah, I, I have no other questions of the witness.
Recross, please, Hearing Officer Mitchell.
Yes, very briefly.
Yes, very briefly, and following up just on the point that the witness was making, Hearing Officer Mitchell, Mr. Bailey, please look at page 12 of your prefiled testimony.
I have it in front of me.
And page 12 of your testimony, you present some projections by the healthcare consulting group called SG2, correct?
I do.
And the projections that you present are SG2's estimates regarding projected PCI volume going forward for the primary service towns of New Canaan, Norwalk, Weston, Westport, and Wilton, right?
That's correct.
And you show what the actual PCI volume is in 2019, and you show what SG2 projects the PCI volume to be going out a five-year period or so to 2024, right?
That's correct.
And for those four towns, what your consulting expert shows is that in 2019, there were a total of 303 PCI cases, right?
That's correct.
And in 2024, your consultant suggests that the total volume of PCI cases will be 298, correct?
That's correct.
A difference of five less. Sir?
Yeah, yes, five less.
Thank you.
No other questions?
No other questions. Okay, so it looks like everybody is done with Mr. Bailey. I just want to make sure we're all set before we take a break.
Yes, thank you, Hearing Officer, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, and then also Attorney Monahan?
Yes, you're ready to take a break.
All right, so we are going to take a break until 1:45. I'll give everybody the notice that we're going to go back on around 1:43, and then for the hearing reporter, I'm going to send you a list of witnesses for both sides.
Thank you very much.
All right, everybody. We'll see you back at 1:45. Thanks. All right, everybody, we'll see you back at 1:45, thanks.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to let you know that we're going to get started again in about five minutes. This is Michaela Mitchell, the hearing officer for OHS. Robert, I'm not sure if you're there. I went ahead and sent you everyone's name who is a witness for both sides in the chat.
I am here and I'll check my email.
Thank you. Oh, it's in the chat function. You utilize it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I am not as expert. Let's see. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to let you know that we're going to get started and again in about five minutes. This is Michaela Mitchell, the hearing officer for OHS. Robert, I'm not sure if you're there. I went ahead and sent you everyone's name who is a witness for both sides in the chat.
I am here and I'll check my email.
Thank you. Oh, it's in the chat function. You utilize it. Yeah.
I am not as expert. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to let you know that we're going to get started and again in about five minutes. This is Michaela Mitchell, the hearing officer for OHS. Robert, I'm not sure if you're there. I went ahead and sent you everyone's name who is a witness for both sides in the chat.
I am here and I'll check my email.
Thank you. Oh, it's in the chat function. You utilize it. Yeah.
Hearing Officer Mitchell, I think we're back now and we're ready to proceed.
Perfect. So you were going to ask additional questions of the intervenor's witnesses, Attorney Tucci?
Yes, I would ask to call Dr. Scott Martin, please.
Okay.
Dr. Martin, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have your prefiled testimony in front of you?
I do.
If you could look at the first page of your written submission, please. Now, one of the things that you say in your prefiled testimony, I'm just going to read the quoted language to you. It begins at the bottom of the first page. Stanford Health Interventional Cardiology Program offers the latest and leading-edge minimally invasive approaches to cardiac care. You strongly believe that to be an accurate statement, correct?
Yes.
And you've heard the earlier testimony concerning the number of patients that have been treated, at least during the seven-month period from 2019 to 2020, who originate from the Norwalk Hospital service area. And you recall that, at least in that period, it was about six patients that ended up actually receiving care at your institution, correct?
You're referring to the transfers from their hospital to ours? Yes.
Yes. And if those patients elected to stay at Norwalk Hospital because Norwalk Hospital was permitted to do elective PCI procedures, you would agree that Stanford Hospital is still going to have a state-of-the-art interventional cardiology program, correct?
Yes, I would agree. You know, the transfers, it's been about one per month historically from Norwalk for quite a while. You know, I don't think that taking that away would provide any imminent existential threat to our program. But I believe the applications, you know, posing that there would be many more patients getting PCI at Norwalk Hospital than those direct transfers.
I understand that's your point of view, but I'm focusing now on what effect this may or may not have on your program and on Stanford Hospital. And you'd agree with me, just as a matter of sort of simple reality, which I think you've acknowledged, that whether or not that volume from the Norwalk Hospital service area is or is not part of your work, Stanford Hospital is still going to be doing hundreds of PCIs annually, right?
Well, I think there's two separate issues. You know, the patients coming in direct transfer potentially a lot less than the patients who end up here from your service area. If you were counting only the patients who are direct transfers out of your hospital, then your PCI per year would be far less than 200. You're obviously coming up with patients who are going to get PCI from somewhere and not just people directly transferred out.
Well, doctor, that wasn't my question. I understand. We're going to get to your view of the volume and the numbers in a minute. But for right now, my question is, you know for a fact that Stanford Hospital does hundreds of primary elective PCIs annually, correct?
Yes.
And you also know for a fact, because you've told me that your experience shows that you get about one transfer a month of a patient who originates from the Norwalk Hospital primary service area, correct?
No. One patient per month from Norwalk Hospital transferred. I don't know where the primary service area is. They come from your hospital.
I understand your point. Okay, I got it. Am I correct in understanding that the primary substance of the testimony that you've offered, both in writing and orally here today, is your belief that the Norwalk Hospital's proposed elective PCI program, in your view, has not presented sufficient information to demonstrate that volume and quality guidelines that you think apply would be met. Is that true?
Yeah, that's my view, but it's taken from the application. The de facto, the numbers that are positive are all less than 200.
I understand. I understand. Are you telling us you've reviewed the application? And based on your review of the Norwalk Hospital CON application, you believe that the application fails to present sufficient information to demonstrate that the applicable professional guidelines for elective PCI without surgical backup have not been satisfied. That's your view, right?
Correct.
And in writing your prefiled testimony, you took care to attach to your written submission the different guidelines of various professional societies and organizations that in particular you wanted to bring to the attention of the Office of Health Strategy, correct?
Yes.
You included them as exhibits so that they could be readily referred to by the hearing officer and by OH staff to look at what the substance of those different guidelines and standards have said over the years in the documents that have been promulgated, right?
Correct.
Okay. Do you agree that with the statement that a PCI has become widely practiced and is an integral component of cardiovascular therapy?
Yes.
And in fact, you attached Exhibit C to your prefiled testimony, and that's precisely what the ACCF AHA SCAI 2013 update says on page 439, correct? PCI has become a widely practiced and integral component of cardiovascular therapy. You don't disagree with that?
Yeah, I'd have to look at it to see if it says that exactly, but I believe it.
Okay. Do you agree with the proposition that the development of coronary arteries? Excuse me. I'll start again. Do you agree with the general proposition that the development of coronary artery stents has dramatically altered the practice of coronary intervention? And that the initial stents available markedly reduce the need for PCI-related emergency coronary bypass surgery?
Yes.
And that's because that's what the information is that was also reported in the 2013 report that we referred to earlier, right? On page 440.
Yeah, I mean, I know it to be true outside of the guidelines, but yes, I mean, that's.
You don't view that to be a controversial medical proposition, that the development of stenting has markedly reduced the need for emergency coronary bypass surgery, correct?
Correct. You know, the development and then advancement of stenting, and this is not news. You know, this was in the 90s to early 2000s. It markedly lowered the need for emergency bypass surgery.
All right. And I want to focus your attention in particular on the 2013 update that we've been discussing, the clinical competence statement that was issued by the three professional organizations. In particular, I direct your attention to page 442 of the July 23, 2013 document.
Okay.
Do you see the reference on page 442 that talks about overall institutional system requirements?
Yes.
And you are familiar generally, are you not, with what the overall institutional system requirements are for procedural success when it comes to doing interventional PCI procedures?
Yes.
And part of what is discussed in the 2013 competence statement is a reference back to the earlier 2011 guidelines that contain some recommendations, right?
Correct.
And those recommendations from the 2011 statement are summarized on page 442, correct?
You're talking about the bulleted bit at the end here?
The three bulleted points that appear at the bottom of page 442.
Yes.
And the first point of the 2011 guideline talks about primary PCI being reasonable in hospitals without onsite cardiac surgery as long as there's appropriate planning for program development that's been accomplished, right?
Yes.
And of course, you're aware that primary PCI is currently performed at Norwalk Hospital without onsite cardiac surgery. And that's because there has been appropriate program development that's been accomplished to allow that to occur.
Yes.
Now, the second bullet talks about elected PCI. And it says elected PCI, you know, could be considered in hospitals that don't have cardiac surgery backup as long as there's appropriate planning for program development that's been accomplished, but also rigorous clinical and angiographic criteria that are used for proper patient selection. That's one of the three guidelines that we're talking about here in the 2011 document, right?
Yes.
And you know that the Norwalk Hospital CON is in excess of 900 pages in length. I assume you've taken some time to go through it.
Yes, if you want to refer to something specifically, I would have to review it now. No, I looked through it.
And in your review of the materials submitted by Norwalk Hospital, you would agree, would you not, that the hospital has specifically stated what the clinical and patient selection criteria are that it would propose to apply to govern selection of patients who are appropriate for elective PCI? That's in there, isn't it?
I believe so, yes.
And the 2011 guideline goes on to state primary or elected PCI should not be performed in hospitals without cardiac surgery backup, without a proven plan for rapid transport to a cardiac surgery operating room in a nearby hospital. And you know for a fact that's in place, don't you, because there are appropriate transport guidelines to get patients from Norwalk to Stanford in the event that there's a need for cardiac surgery backup, correct?
Yeah, I don't know that there's a plan with Stanford, because I don't recall ever getting an emergency surgery patient from Norwalk. But I'm sure there's a plan somewhere. I don't doubt that.
All right. So, doctor, you've expressed a number of concerns relating to the data reported with respect to projected PCI volume going forward and so on. And as I understand it, the big thing that you're concerned about is the issue of whether or not it's reasonable to conclude that Norwalk Hospital can achieve a minimum patient threshold of approximately 200 PCIs on an annual basis. That's the issue that you're most concerned about, right?
Yes.
Because that number is stated as one of the various components of the elements that these professional societies have identified as important, correct?
Correct.
Do you agree with the idea that you also need to exercise reasonable and appropriate caution against an overemphasis or preoccupation with specific volume recommendations?
I have to check to the form, only because I don't understand it. If the doctor understands it, he certainly can answer it. But I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, doctor, you get what I'm asking you?
Just can you just repeat it?
Sure. Do you agree with the concept or idea that in considering this notion of volume thresholds for the safe performance of PCI, that there ought to be an exercise of an appropriate degree of caution against preoccupation or overemphasis with specific volume recommendations? Do you think that's a reasonable approach to take?
I don't think so. You know, if you look at the guidelines, they say a minimum volume, greater than 200 PCIs a year should be achieved. And it's pretty clear that, you know, it goes on to say multiple low-volume partial-service PCI centers diffuse PCI expertise, increase costs, and have not been shown to improve access. I think it's pretty clear that the 200 is not, you know, something to be taken lightly.
All right. I might direct your attention to page 451 of Exhibit C, the document you attached to your testimony. Do you have it in front of you?
I do.
The paragraph in the first full paragraph in the second column of the ACCF AHA SCAI clinical competence statement reads as follows. Quote, "It is the opinion of our writing committee that the public, policymakers, and payers should not overemphasize specific volume recommendations, recognizing that this is just one of many factors that may be related to clinical outcomes," end quote. Have I read that accurately?
Yes. You know, if you go back to the paragraph before.
Let me direct your attention. Let me direct your attention to.
You're right. The hearing officer.
So, yeah, I hear you, Attorney Monahan. I'm going to let you go ahead and make your objection.
Yeah, I believe there was a selected sentence. The doctor, who is an expert in reading this, was, I believe, attempting to put that sentence in a context, and he was cut off. And I think he should be entitled to answer the question.
So here's what I'm going to say about it. I know that Attorney Tucci didn't give you an opportunity to respond, but rather than go back and forth about whether or not he has the opportunity to do it now, I'm going to give you the opportunity to follow up with Dr. Martin after Attorney Tucci asks some questions. So if that's something that you feel that he needs to bring out, and it's something that Attorney Tucci believes is a yes or no question, then you can go back and follow up.
Thank you.
All right, doctor. Let me direct your attention. Pardon me. Let me direct your attention to, again, page 451, which includes the second full paragraph in that column, which reads, quote, "The relative benefit of more favorable outcomes at facilities with higher volumes must be weighed against the potential decline in access resulting from minimum volume standard."
No, I think that's accurate and reasonable.
There. Again, I want to, I want to focus on volume requirements since it appears to be a major point of your contribution to these proceedings. Do, do, do you, do you think it's reasonable that when we look at the criteria that the various professional societies have identified, that, that appropriate weight be given to all of the criteria that have been identified?
I, yeah, can you be more specific? I, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Yeah, so, we, we talked a little, a little bit ago about three of the guidelines or requirements, you know, patient selection, rigorous patient selection, appropriate policies and procedures. Those, those are important as well, aren't they?
Certainly.
You, 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 it wouldn't be, it would be, it would be a challenge to have a safe elected PCI program without surgical backup if you didn't have really good patient screening to make sure you were only doing elected PCI on the proper patients at a facility without immediate surgery backup, right?
Correct, and, you know, similarly, you need the proper equipment, and you need cath lab, and you need nurses. And, yeah, those are the other requirements, and I agree that all the requirements should be met.
Okay. You, do, do you have any concern about using the volume standard as a metric or a requirement when it is equated to be a measure or predictor of quality? Does that cause you any pause?
I think there have been multiple studies that show that doing a procedure more does correlate with quality. But, you know, I, I think within, within reason, it doesn't really give you pause. I think that's reasonable. I, you know, if I, if I had to go for an elected PCI, I would rather have it done with a provider or the institution that did quite a number of them rather than did very few.
Right, but it's a question of degree, isn't it?
There's almost a question of degree, sure.
Yeah, so, so, when, when the committee who wrote the 2013 competence update document says on page 452, quote, "The writing committee cautions against focusing on specific volume recommendations and emphasizes that procedural volume is one of several variables to consider when determining operator competency. Volume is not a surrogate for quality and should not be substituted for risk-adjusted outcomes or other measures of quality." Do you agree with that?
Sure, you, you could have somebody who does a high-volume procedures and has poor, poor outcomes. But, you know, it is 2013 documents does relax, you know, the 2011, you know, the, the context is in 2011, they recommended that providers have a greater than 75 procedures, greater than 400 procedures at, at each site and onsite cardiac surgery. So this 2013 document was in that, in that setting and was relaxing those guidelines from 75 per operator and 400 per center and onsite cardiac surgery to allow for more. But, you know, it is a question of degree. I mean, if we're going to relax it from 200, are we going to relax it to 10? You know, there, there's, there is a standard here, and it's for a reason.
Right, and so, and so what you've just described, you, you would, could be reasonably thought of as, we, we had an approach that we as professionals thought made sense in 2011, and now looking at it two years later, we've evolved our thinking based on looking at new information and new data and, and new science that tells us what we think is reasonable, right?
I, I think that's correct, and I, you know, I, I can see where this is going, that, you know, now it's, you know, this is from 2013, 2014, have things changed since then? The answer is no. If you look, we, we've updated, you know, guidelines in 2016, 2017, and they all reaffirm this 200 number. There's a really good no study that, that's, you know, randomizing patients to low-volume centers, because people think that's, that would be ludicrous. And nobody is going to compare their 50 PCI per year program to Cleveland Clinic or, or Columbia.
All right, Doctor, well, I appreciate very much that you, you, you may be able to see where we're going, but I still need to get there. So.
Very well.
Let's talk about these evolving standards that we've been discussing and, and how things may or may not have changed as more and more professional input has happened since 2013. And, and you would agree that there has been more guidance that's been issued over the course of the last seven years, right?
Yeah, I, you know, I think we, we, we include exhibits from, I think, 2016 and or 2017. And, and certainly, these guidelines do come out when things change. You know, you may, I don't know if you're going to bring it up or not, but there was a recent guidance from one of our societies regarding potentially, you know, guidance for PCI in ambulatory surgical centers. That, that was prompted by Medicare CMS approving payment for such PCI. And, you know, you saw that when, when there's a need, there's a guideline document come up with. But with regards to, you know, surgery, you know, in regards to PCI without onsite surgery, there's been no change and no need to update the guidance.
Well, Doctor, since you brought it up, it's a little bit out of order, but if, if you could enlighten us, I'd be interested to hear your, your views and understanding regarding that recent policy promulgation relating to having PCIs done in an ambulatory surgical center, which obviously by definition doesn't include surgical backup to do bypass surgery. What, what, what's your sense of how we evolved to get there?
I'm going to interject. We're not talking about ambulatory surgical centers, it's not part of the application. I just want to keep it focused on this application.
All right, we don't, we don't need to belabor the point, Hearing Officer Mitchell, thank you very much, I'll move on. So, Doctor, are you with me?
Yes.
Do you, I, I want to, I want to ask you some more about sort of what your views are regarding sort of the general state of interventional cardiology in, in the world we're in today. Do you, do you agree with the idea that performing PCI without onsite surgical backup is something that's gained greater acceptance as the years have gone by in the United States?
Yes.
And, 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 and that is a view that is expressed in Exhibit B, the 2014 update on percutaneous coronary intervention without surgical backup that was done by the three professional societies we've been discussing. And, and, and that, for the record, appears at page 2621 of that document. Do you?
No, he's reading 242, I, I, I agree.
Yeah, thank you. Do you? You're familiar with the New England Journal of Medicine?
Yeah, I've heard of it.
Even I've heard of it. Even I've heard of it, Doctor. And, and at the risk of stating the obvious, you, obviously, the New England Journal of Medicine is, is an authoritative source in the medical field, correct?
Yes.
In the, in the course of preparing for your testimony, both in its written form and oral, did you have occasion to look at an article published in the New England Journal of Medicine in May of 2012? Title of it being "Percutaneous Coronary Interventions Without Onsite Cardiac Surgical Backup"?
I have it here in front of me now, so, I, I have seen this before, yes.
Yeah. Do you recall that that article had some discussion that specifically addressed the question of volume when it came to doing PCIs without onsite cardiac surgery backup?
I, I believe you, but can you direct me to where, where, where you want me to look?
Sure, in, in particular, I, I'd ask you to focus on page eight, 1818.
My, what I have in front of me goes up to 1801. Okay. I have it in front of me.
You, you're familiar with the term non-primary PCI?
I'm sorry, non-what?
Non-primary PCI.
Sure, and in, in this context, that's elected PCI. You know, you can divide it up in different ways, but I, you know, it's elected PCI for our purposes.
And, and the New England Journal of Medicine article, when it's discussing volume considerations, says, and I quote, "Non-primary PCI is eight times as common as primary PCI, according to national registry data, and there is a strong association between PCI volume and outcome." Do, do you, are you familiar with that national registry data?
I, I, I believe it, and I, I, I haven't looked at the national registry data in terms of the, and the frequency of primary versus non-primary PCI, but I think that, that sounds, sounds like.
I, I guess my point is this, Doctor, do you, you have any reason to quarrel with the notion that from an experiential standpoint, elected PCI is performed eight times more than primary PCI is performed on average?
And I think nationwide, that, that rings true.
All right. And, and the New England Journal of Medicine goes on to state, make the following statement. And this is a paragraph in the left-hand column down toward the bottom. "If the privileges of sites that perform primary PCI were expanded to include non-primary cases, the resulting increase in volume would enhance hospital, operator, and team experience and would theoretically improve the quality and safety of all PCIs performed." Is that, is that a statement that you generally agree with?
Yes, but if you, the, the next sentence is "Removing the requirement raises countervailing concerns. Proliferation of sites in which non-primary PCI can be performed would convert some existing high-volume regional centers into low-volume programs with adverse implications for quality."
Right.
And I think that's the, the objection that's being raised here.
Right, these things all have to be balanced out, don't they?
Object to the form. You're asking him what his interpretation is, you can ask him.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm asking you. Do you agree that these things all have to be balanced out to make sure that there's an appropriate balance maintained so that quality exists in, in, in both high-volume centers and, and centers that do a lower volume of PCI? Isn't that the goal?
I'm going to let, Dr. Martin, the answer, Dr. Martin, you're already answering, but go ahead.
Yeah, the, the goal is to have high quality everywhere, I, I'll agree with that.
All right. In, in your written testimony, you conclude by saying that the concern that you, that you're bringing to the fore here is that the Norwalk application will, and I'm, I'm quoting, redirect patients from existing full services, full-service providers, end quote. And then, and you go on to say, quote, "With no clear public benefit." Is that your view?
Yes.
Do you, do you agree that allowing a patient to remain with a provider of choice is something that could be viewed as a public benefit?
Sure.
Do you agree that not requiring a patient to travel to get needed care when the circumstances don't require it can be a public benefit?
I, I think that's a tougher one, because, you know, it depends. Saying the circumstances requirement is really what's at issue here.
I understand that, but I'm asking you to assume the circumstances don't.
All, all other things being equal, you're better off, you know, patients are better off having choice and being able to do things closer to home, I, I'll agree with that.
Okay, and I assume you'd also agree that if that was the case, it would be a public benefit not to have to pay the cost of having an ambulance transport a patient from one institution to another or have duplicate testing run because the medical record systems don't talk to each other, right?
So I, I don't propose to be an expert on cost of, of healthcare, but what I will say is that places that have centralized healthcare do have this huff-and-spoke system where not every hospital duplicates every service, and they, you know, that's, that's done as part of a cost-saving measure. So I, 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 I would argue that transferring to higher-level care is not necessarily a higher-cost proposition for the healthcare system as a whole.
Well, let, let's try it this way. In, in a world where the goal is to provide and maintain a high level of quality when medical care is provided by institutions such as Stanford Hospital and Norwalk Hospital, would you agree with the notion that finding ways to deliver that care more efficiently and reduce the cost that consumers have to pay for that care, if it can be achieved, would be a public benefit?
I, I agree that it's a public benefit, I just don't know that not transferring patients is, is a, is a net cost saver.
All right, thank you, Doctor, that concludes my questions.
Any follow-up for Dr. Martin, Attorney Monahan?
Yes, if you could just give me one moment, I, I do have a, a follow-up. Dr. Martin, without going through every article that was referenced by Attorney Tucci, it's fair to say that he selected segments of different articles and asked you to read them and agree or disagree. Is that a fair, fair statement?
Sure.
Okay. Having studied the literature, both in terms of your general practice as an interventionalist, and having studied all the literature in connection with this application for this PCI program, and having studied all the literature for the application for the Greenwich Yale New Haven PCI program, when you examine these various articles that come up with different improvements, studies, examinations, does it alter your view at all that the best standard in terms of minimum threshold still stands in the 2014 consensus document by the three expert agencies that we have talked about?
No, I think the, the 2014 document still stands.
Isn't it a fact that guidelines are in fact studied, examined, even debated? And that is why there is a number, there are a number of literature pieces that come out. And it is, as Dr. Bala testified earlier, these consensus groups that come together to pull all that together to come up with a gold standard best practice. Is that a fair statement?
Question to the leading and the speech.
I'm, I'm following up Ms. Attorney Michaela on the very questions that he was giving segmented and without context. This is my ability now to give context to what was omitted from the question.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to ask those questions, Attorney Monahan, but just not, I would rather hear Dr. Martin testify in his own words rather than, yeah.
Certainly. Okay, so, based on everything you've read, what do you view today as the best standard in terms of minimum threshold or elective PCI in your professional opinion?
From?
For facilities?
My professional opinion is shaped by. My professional opinion is shaped by the expert consensus guidelines, which are still, you know, it's been reaffirmed fully again and again that at least two hundred is a minimum standard.
And with all of the other advancements, additions, improvements, has there been any document that you know of or that's been demonstrated or shown to us by the applicant that has superseded, eradicated, or abolished that threshold? No? I have no other questions.
All right, any follow-up or any additional questions for the intervenors' witnesses, Attorney Tucci?
Nothing further. Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Attorney Monahan, for questions for the applicant's witnesses.
Okay. May I just have a moment to put some binders of?
Absolutely.
Hearing Officer Mitchell, I'm just going to step out briefly while Mr. Monahan is getting ready.
All right, so what we can do is we can go ahead and take like a five-minute break, if that's okay with people. We'll get, we'll go back on the record at 2:35 rather than just have the dead air while people are waiting around in case anybody needs to use the restroom or make a call.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We're going to go back on the record in about a minute. Attorney Monahan, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Attorney Tucci, you ready?
Yes, thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell.
All right, so we'll go ahead and I'll hand it over to you, Attorney Monahan.
Yes, I'd like to call Dr. Murphy as a witness for examination.
Okay, one sec.
Hello, Dr. Murphy. How are you?
Hello, Mr. Monahan. Good, thank you.
Um, Dr. Murphy, you submitted prefiled testimony in this matter, correct?
Correct.
And, you know, without going through your whole curriculum vitae, which is obviously very impressive, you are a physician, correct?
Yes, correct.
Am I correct that you do not specialize in any area of cardiology?
That is also correct.
In connection with your role at NuVance, what is your role at NuVance in connection with Norwalk Hospital?
I'm the chief executive officer of the entire system, including the various hospitals.
Is it fair to say that you have the final say when it comes to a decision at Norwalk Hospital if there's a disagreement between you and the CEO of the Norwalk Hospital?
That's probably true.
In your prefiled testimony, you made it quite clear that you see a regulatory impediment or barrier to the application that you had submitted, correct?
Correct.
And am I correct in assuming that the fact that you had applied for this as Norwalk Hospital twice before in years past and had been denied by the office, the predecessor of OHS, the Office of Healthcare Access, that that contributed to your view of there being a regulatory barrier?
Objection to the form. Objection, Your Honor, no foundation. Objection, Hearing Officer, no foundation. Question assumes that Mr. Murphy was in charge of Norwalk Hospital at that time.
I'll establish the foundation very clearly. If Dr. Murphy does not know about that, I think we can get that established on the record.
All right, I will say in terms of this type of hearing, the evidentiary rules don't apply, but you know, it probably would be helpful to have that on the record. You know, he may not be able to answer if he wasn't, so.
Well, I was aware of it, and you know, as was the case at Danbury Hospital where it was previously denied, it was ultimately overturned, the state permitted it. So I would say that the fact that it was previously, the application was denied, had no material bearing on our decision to file again.
In, on page two, you have your testimony in front of you.
I can get it. Just give me a second. The, go ahead.
At the very top of the second page of your testimony, you, it's a carryover sentence, but you establish a sentence about establishing an overview of NuVance Health's system-wide network vision and demonstrating how the application and the establishment of an elective PCI service at Norwalk Hospital is essential to furthering that goal. Do you see that?
I do.
Okay. The next sentence, I want, I'd like to understand if you could explain to me, what is the longstanding state restriction that you have put out as a regulatory barrier that you foresee as a, as a, as a potential problem that you would like OHS to overcome and approve?
The requirement that onsite cardiac surgery backup be present at the same site where the elective PCI is taking place.
So is that, and it's only because I don't understand, perhaps I don't understand your answer. Is that because the, you are required to transfer from Norwalk Hospital patients who do not need primary PCI, but if they need, if they want elective PCI, they need to be transferred to others? Is that the, is that the barrier?
The barrier is, if, you know, in our view, in an ideal world, if patients wanted or needed elective PCI and they wanted to have it here, they could have it here, even if this site did not offer cardiac surgery at Norwalk Hospital, that they should, they should be permitted to have that procedure here since in fact, primary PCI is being done, and we have the talent, the expertise, the facility, et cetera.
Okay, I understand that that's your goal, but what I'm trying to understand is what's the regular barrier from you doing that?
Well, we don't have cardiac surgery onsite here.
Okay, and why is that a problem for you?
Because that's the requirement.
And do you understand that that is a, if you will, let me put it this way, or ask it this way. You've described this as a state restriction and as a regulatory barrier. Are you asking OHS to change any particular regulation?
We are asking to be permitted to do elective PCI here at Norwalk Hospital and that the state approve the application.
You do understand that the Office of Health Strategy has no ability in this proceeding to change or make a regulation, correct?
I understand that.
Okay. You also understand that the Office of Health Strategy is, while it certainly will, is, is under the statutory principles, open through all applications to listen to all claimants of all sizes, systems, non-systems, whatever it may be. Their goal is not to, their mission is not to grant a vision of a system, but to uphold the state law as it defines the principles and guidelines of CON, correct?
Well, I don't know that upholding the state law, they can approve an application or not. I don't know the details regarding the applicability of enforcing state law in that process.
Okay, so as you sit here, and I recognize that unless I miss something on your resume, we're also with JD, I'm not asking you for a legal opinion, but is it your understanding that OHS can act independently of statutory principles and guidelines guiding this decision?
Objection, Hearing Officer Mitchell, if I may be heard.
On what basis?
The objection, the objection is that his understanding of legal matters is not relevant. I've tried to refrain from objecting here, but I don't think this line of questioning about what Dr. Murphy may or may not understand about the legal implications of CON regulations is at all relevant to or helpful to OHS in deciding whether or not this application should or should not be granted.
Attorney Monahan?
Well, it was the lead introduction to this witness's testimony that he put forth as the premise of his testimony and then filled in the strength of the vision of the Heart and Vascular Center and talked about a request to remove, not consider, remove regulatory and state barriers. I think it is a fair question to ask the CEO of this system whether he has a sense of the distinction between the role of this hearing officer, this body, with all due respect, in the state legislature.
Hearing Officer Mitchell.
If he doesn't know, he can tell me he doesn't know.
Hearing Officer Mitchell, may it be heard briefly in response?
Yes.
The, the, the only point I'm making is that Mr. Monahan asked the witness what his understanding or belief was to explain the concept of a barrier, a regulatory barrier, and the witness answered him three times. So I don't know what else he's asking this witness to explain other than what he's already explained, and I'm not sure why we have to keep going over this. That's my point.
The only question that is unanswered is whether the, whether the witness understands that state statutes govern the operation of this OHS decision-making process and the stringent review needed, or whether he has no idea that that's the case. He can tell me either one.
So I'm going to allow for that last question that you asked, Attorney Monahan, and then Dr. Murphy. Are you able to answer that last question?
Yes, I have confidence that the Office of Health Strategy can interpret statutes, apply guidelines, and approve applications, and that that blend of activities is what we're here for. And the fact that we don't have a cardiac surgical program is in fact a barrier for us that we are asking you to consider as you examine our application.
Thank you. Now, one of the statutory principles and that, and and I'm asking if you're aware of this, is whether the, in determining whether your application has merit, is whether the, the results of the Office of Health Strategy's examination of the relationship of the proposed project to the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan. Are you aware of that as a tenet or principle or concept that guides this proceeding?
I realize that the Office of Health Strategy does have to at least understand, if not respect, the principles articulated in that, that policy or statement or plan.
Okay, and in addition to that statement in the legislative provision that I just read, the Office of Health Strategy has indeed published the statewide healthcare facilities plan. Are you aware of that?
Not with any specificity.
Are you aware that the current statewide plan published by the Office of Health Strategy on page thirty-nine of its 2012 publication, which is still of its 2012 publication, which is still in force, and which has been cited in a number of CON applications and final decisions, states as follows. Connecticut hospitals seeking authorization to initiate an elective PCI program without onsite cardiac surgery capabilities will be required to meet the conditions required in the ACCF AHAC, excuse me, SCAI Practice Guideline, and to demonstrate clear public need for the program. The guideline states that it is only appropriate to consider initiation of a PCI program without onsite cardiac surgical backup if this program will clearly fill a void in the healthcare needs of the community. And further, the guideline notes that the competition with another PCI program in the same geographic area, particularly an established program with surgical backup, may not be in the best interest of the community. In advance of filing this application, were you aware of that established guideline by this agency?
Well, I know that the, two comments, Mr. Monahan. First of all, I'm not worried about OHS's ability to properly do its job. I have full confidence in the people who work there. So the fact that they understand what the state facilities health plan says, I'm sure that they will adhere to it and follow it. And in addition to the 2012 facilities plan, which you have identified, I'm sure you're also aware of the supplement that was published in 2020, which specifically addresses this issue and the need to call and bring together a task force to examine this particular question. So the 2012 guidance and plan that was published has clearly been brought back for further examination and discussion.
I appreciate that, and I am well aware of that task force. But, and I appreciate that you bringing that out into the, into the record. However, I, I also appreciate the fact that you say that you will respect the ability of the Office of Health Care Strategy to adhere to its own published guidelines. Now, the fact that there's a task force studying, you are not purporting to tell me that that task force has somehow superseded or already modified or eliminated this guideline, are you?
I'm not privy to the thinking of OHS and how it interprets the task force, or for that matter, where the task force is in its work. I'm simply drawing attention to the fact that I inferred that you were offering the 2012 plan as if it were poured in concrete and never changing. And I simply wanted to draw attention to the fact that I believe OHS is aware of the fact that guidelines evolve and need to be reexamined, and it will do its job properly in the context of the task force. The timing will be left to OHS, not to me.
Okay, and there's nothing you know that I don't know about the timing having already been completed on that, is there?
I don't know what you know, and I don't know where the task force is in terms of its work.
Are you on the task force?
I am not.
When the original application for this CON was filed, who on your staff did you put in charge of pulling it together?
There was a team.
Okay, but was there, was there a lead person on the team?
Well, I would speak to Sally Hurlhey or Mark Worschowski is the key context, as far as I was concerned.
Okay. The when we talk about, excuse me, the original application, there, as is common with CON applications, there is an attestation filed. And the attestations in this case, in your application, were filed by, excuse me, Peter Cordell, who of course is the president of Norwalk Hospital, or, and Stu Rosen, or, excuse, Stephen Rosenberg, who I understand is the chief financial officer of NuVance, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and, and just for the record, those affidavits attest that all the facts contained in this submitted certificate of need application are true and correct to the best of their knowledge. And if you need to see it to corroborate what I'm saying, you can, but I think Attorney Tuji will, will test that I have read correctly.
So you're asking if I knew that they were attesting, what is the question again?
That they were attesting to the, by affidavit, to the truth and veracity, to the best of their knowledge, of the facts recited in this application.
Yes.
Okay. Now, one of the facts that was recited in the executive summary was that there was no capital expenditure associated with this application. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
So it, it also, there is also a statement in here that the hospital will not incur, excuse me, the program can be implemented, and I'm reading from page sixteen of the original app, application, that the program can be implemented immediately upon approval of this proposal as the facilities and staff to provide the service are already in place at the hospital, and there is a demonstrated need for the service in the hospital's community. Do you believe that to be true and correct?
Yes.
Now, subsequent to the filing of, of this application, in response to the Office of Healthcare Strategy completeness questions, there was a revised financial worksheet that was submitted. And in that financial worksheet, and I'm referring to the applicant Norwalk Hospital Financial Worksheet A, there is a specific request for the applicant to provide projected incremental costs associated with the project. And while I I guess, I have highlighted certain costs, and I don't know that I've covered every single one. For fiscal year 2021, the estimated incremental cost by Norwalk Hospital is $1,840,000. The projected annual cost for fiscal year 2022 was $1,317,000. And the projected annual cost for fiscal year 2023 was $1,583,000. Were you aware of those incremental costs being supplemented or added to the application?
Well, I'm sure what you're stating is true.
And I'm asking if you were aware that, 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 that in fact, what we had originally, what Norwalk had originally purported in its original application, which it deemed to be true and correct based on its knowledge at that time, was actually several million dollars incorrect. And it was only after, after some later analysis that, that the additional costs were surfaced.
Objection, Hearing Officer Mitchell. Objection that it misstates the evidence and comes fairly close to being scurrilous.
Okay, any response to that, Attorney Monahan?
I can explain the basis for my objection. It's a strong objection I'd like to explain.
Okay. Wait, hold on one second, Attorney Monahan.
The basis for my objection is that counsel asked the witness five questions ago, or so, about facts contained in the executive summary. And he specifically asked the witness about facts relating to capital expenditures associated with the application. And the witness gave an answer that had to do with capital expenditures. Now counsel is focusing on incremental costs, which is a different thing than capital expenditures, and attempting to draw a comparison between the two, as if they're both the same, and then accusing Norwalk Hospital of misrepresenting information. I object.
That is absolutely a misstated objection. The paragraph that I read from indeed at first was no capital expenditures. The second paragraph that I read dealt with the program can be, and I'll read it again, the program can be implemented immediately upon approval of this proposal as the facilities and staff to provide the service are already in place at the hospital, and there is no demonstrated need for the service in the hospital community. As I, as I will be able to show in this financial statement, there were FTEs that needed to be added, there were operating costs that had to be added that were not capital costs. So I take great offense to the, to the, to this, what was called as a scurrilous objection.
All right, so can you help, for the record, just make the distinction between the capital costs and the costs that were on the worksheet, and then help us understand where you're going with the line of questioning?
Where I'm going with the line of questioning is, we are now talking with the, the CEO of the NuVance System, who has premised this entire application on the need for NuVance System to move forward to develop this vascular system, this vascular program, to gain approval in this application and to overcome longstanding existing regulatory barriers. What I am saying is, regardless of the team that he put in place, there is an application, and this is the first of several, that I will be able to show that the initial application, which in appropriate manner should be complete to the best of the applicant's ability, has been altered and modified and supplemented right up until the fifteenth, the day of the prefiled testimony, to try to augment the problems that occurred in the deficiencies in the original application. And if this witness has no knowledge as the lead person, he can tell me that.
All right, I'm gonna, Mr. Murphy, Dr. Murphy, I'm sorry, apologize for that. I'm gonna let you respond to that, to the best of your knowledge.
Yeah, let me first reassure you, Mr. Monahan, and I'm, I'm certain that you didn't mean to be offensive by implication. We operate on a principle of integrity, so that I am 100% confident that any question that you ask of us will be properly answered. I have, you know, I have the good fortune of being surrounded by a lot of smart people here today, to whom I can defer for specifics regarding why were these incremental costs added. But in your characterization, you said that the document was altered. I think that that isn't, is not accurate. It was in fact supplemented, but we didn't alter anything. We found additional information and provided it truthfully. And that is the basis, integrity is the basis upon which all of our actions are guided. So if you want me to provide for you, someone else to answer the question with specific detail, I can certainly make that happen if Hearing Officer Mitchell would like me to do that.
Dr. Murphy, and I appreciate that, and believe me, in no way, and I'm sorry if, in the spirit of a proceeding like this, if tone comes across, there is no way I intended to in any way be offensive toward you, or toward the integrity of you, or your team. In fact, I really want to be clear about that, so I apologize if it came across that way. The, but, so if you may, and bear with me, I'd like to ask you a few more questions about your testimony. Right now, you have, and maybe even on hearing the testimony of others, but I suspect you have a very good sense that elective PCIs, to the extent that Norwalk Hospital cannot do elective PCIs right now, they are transferred to at least four different hospitals and maybe more. But those include Stanford Hospital, Bridgeport Hospital, St. Vincent's Hospital, and of course, your own Danbury Hospital, correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that was a yes?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Now, have you, it is, am I correct that is the case that